All right, if we can begin, please. Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Regular Meeting of October the 24th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. Meeting has been called to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Here.
Councilmember Marty Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hamilton.
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Here. Thank you. Those that are able, if you would rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four. Public comments for items not on the agenda. Speaker cards, please.
I have one speaker card. Sedana Trackster.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for having me. I wanted to take this time to announce and highlight this weekend's trick-or-treat event on the Ave hosted by the downtown merchants. Over 41 local downtown businesses have come together and organized making this event possible. We are expecting over 300 attendees this year, and we're extremely excited to have people visit downtown. This will be a free event for the whole family. There will be over there'll be 13 community volunteer crossing guards at each intersection along San Mateo Ave so parents can rest easy and enjoy the moment. Last year's turnout for the merchants' trick-or-treat event was an eye-opener and a great opportunity to see firsthand the enormous potential that San Bruno's downtown truly has. You see, it's important for the city to host events particularly in the heart of its downtown. It prevents it presents small businesses, it presents small business owners with the valuable opportunity to engage with our local community. With that said, I wanted to touch on Centennial Park. First, I wanted to recognize the San Bruno Community Foundation and their strategic grant of $500,000 back in November of 2022. I know that if approved, it could be a huge step in the right direction, enhancing the downtown's vitality and beautification. The space could serve as a sort of a Times Square, a town square, a place that ties the community together where small events could be held safely and at low or no cost to the organizer. Small town events could be held monthly, annually, creating a consistent flow of visitors and increasing foot traffic. San Bruno has so much great local talent, the space could provide a place to highlight the skills these kids and young adults have learned and mastered. For example, the students at Dan Sells Academy at Taekwondo, did you know they perform at the Golden State Warriors' halftime show? The Vibebo Music School, they host rooftop music festivals in San Francisco. Pinot's Pellet could host outdoor painting events, and the merchants' Christmas and Easter events could safely accommodate a larger gathering. So please consider the big picture and the direct impact a community space like this could have on its downtown if approved by the council. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
I have no other speaker cards.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Seeing none, we'll move on to item five, announcements and presentations. The first item is Issue Proclamation declaring November the 12th through the 18th, 2023 as United Against Hate Week. And I'll just read a couple of the wherethes. Whereas the United States is a nation of immigrants whose strength comes from its diversity. And whereas deep divisions in our country are the result of extreme ideology further strengthening a cycle of mistrust and suspicion fueled by fear, anxiety, bullying, and insecurity. And whereas the number of hate crimes across the United States has increased dramatically over the past couple of years. Whereas education, compassion, and cooperation are the key to unlocking understanding and embracing differences between people. And now therefore I, Rico E. Medina, Mayor of the City of San Bruno, do hereby proclaim the week of November the 12th through the 19th, 2023 as United Against Hate Week. And that is something that this county has done, which San Bruno brought forward with the prior city manager throughout our county, and appreciate that the Board of Supervisors and the others will do so. Next item is item B. And as normal, public safety personnel seem to stand in the back, but we appreciate all of your presence. And this is to issue proclamation recognizing K-9 Officer Amanda Real Vasquez and her K-9 Storm as recipients of the CNOA K-9 Team of the Year Award. And this is a very significant, so this is for the state of California. This is the award. And thanks to two of you, we have received it. Whereas illegal drugs have harmful impacts on the community and communities throughout the state of California. And whereas enforcement of drug-related laws is an important component in the effort to reduce such impacts. And whereas police K-9 teams are essential to the effective enforcement of drug and narcotic trafficking. And whereas the California Narcotics Officers Association, CNOA, recognizes excellence in drug and narcotic enforcement efforts through their annual awards. And whereas the CNOA has named San Bruno Police Department K-9 handler Amanda Real Vasquez and her K-9 partner Storm as K-9 Team of the Year for the entire state of California for 2023. Whereas this recognition is a tremendous contribution that the officer and K-9 have made to the community and its safety. Now therefore I, Rico E. Medina, the Mayor of the City of San Bruno, do hereby recognize the amazing work and the incredible achievement of the officer and K-9 through this proclamation. I also want to have it be known that it runs in your family as far as enforcement and the law and all that your family has given at various levels, that you have followed in footsteps, that you offer 10 years as a K-9, which is just incredible, which also is why other awards have been achieved for this year, but you and your K-9 have received for the state of California, shall we say, you and the top dog for all that. So if you'd step forward, I'd like to acknowledge you for all you do. Amanda. Thank you to the department for being here and showing support. Amanda, thank you. And Amanda is one who does the work, gets the awards, and continues the work. So she did not wish to speak, though she had an opportunity. But we appreciate everyone's presence for being here. And again, you've made San Bruno proud, you've made the department proud, and we're proud. Thank you again. Now we will move on to item C. Receive an update from Recology of San Bruno on their recent community cleanup drop-off event that was held on Saturday, October the 14th, 2023.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Thank you for letting me spend about five minutes of your evening just kind of giving you an update on our last community drop-off day. So just for a point of context, to remind you, we started this event back in 2020 during COVID to give our residents a sense of consistency and a place for them to dispose of all their items properly that they had been cleaning while stuck at home. And fast forward, we now just hosted our seventh community drop-off day. Historically, I wanted to give you a chart of the participation. So all those are levels of the amount of cars that we've seen. Fall has typically been our most attended. And you can see those two top ones were definitely fall of '21 and fall of '22. So last October 14th, we hosted 282 cars. We had over 19 volunteers, and we had Mayor Medina, Vice Mayor Hamilton, and Councilmember Medina out there helping us all. We also had tremendous volunteers from the Church of Latter-day Saints. They must have supplied at least 10 volunteers. An improvement this time, we had no overnight dumping. So normally, we get a lot of people kind of coming early. They've kind of figured out where we're at, and they dump their stuff. But we put up some A-frames and told the public that we're monitoring it, and it's monitored by cameras, and we didn't have any dumping. We took in 32,000 pounds of garbage, and this time, we improved it again by having two rows. And then we had some rear loaders, then we had some debris boxes. So it went really, really smoothly with just little tweaks every time. So again, another chart just for visual to see how much garbage we continually take over time. We also took our least amount of paint. I think people are finally running out of their paint, but we took 1,500 pounds of paint. E-waste never slows down. We take about the same amount every single time. We had 28 appliances come through and about a dozen mattresses. The partners that help us make this possible, we have teams from e-recycling. They're there to take everyone's e-waste. We have Clean Harbors, who takes all the paint. Again, we had the rear-load trucks, which crunches a lot of the material, so we don't have to have the drivers come through and empty the debris boxes. And we did another insert that we've done over the past several years. So this, none of this could not be possible without the partnership of the Church of Latter-day Saints and the City of San Bruno. The city is so gracious, they provide us a CSO for the day, and then they also provide us barricades and the cones, which makes us able to cone everything off and continue to make things go smoothly. And then they street sweep, or they sweep the parking lot the next day for any loose debris. So tremendous partnership. The next, the same day, during the same time, we also had our compost giveaway. So we had two debris boxes full of compost over by the 4-H, and a lot of cars, it was self-service, but they came through and got their rich compost. I did ask if I could take two minutes to of this presentation, just to give you kind of a recology update. So I have a few slides just to kind of go over what's been happening. July 1st, as per the new franchise agreement, Recology took over the billing. And I'm pleased to report that it's gone very smoothly. The first two weeks during transition, we had every, all hands on deck answering phones, so our residents were not stuck in a hold queue. I personally was on the phones with my customer service manager and anyone else who could pick up. So, you know, we're learning things along the way, and so are our residents, but it's been, I think, a very positive, positive transition. We also recently updated our website with toter choices, with garbage selection choices. This is the first time we've actually ever put pricing on our website. I think historically we haven't, because you got to make sure that as of July 1st, we update that website. So this is the first time where customers can go in and actually see what we offer in garbage selection. So the 16-gallon is included in there, along with the 20 and upwards. We're also still collecting the abandoned waste, as per the franchise agreement. I just wanted to kind of give you a few photos of what the kind of things our drivers see out there and what's reported on the app. But we are a 24-hour turnaround, Monday through Friday. So if somebody reports something on Monday afternoon, it's picked up on Tuesday. So as long as we get the information by before 4 o'clock, we can pick it up the next day. And just to give you a visual, we pick up about 520 abandoned waste reports a year. So the drivers are extremely busy. Also a reminder, we're doing our 27th Annual Coats for Kids. This program was started by Vicky Hachey's daughter, who worked here, right here at City Hall. And so we've continued the tradition year over year. So right now, we have collection bins at a lot of our businesses, and our distribution day, and everyone's welcome to come, is from 4:00 to 7:00 on the 15th of November at the American Legion, who is gracious enough to give us that space at no cost. So they're such community-minded people that they want to open that space for everyone. And it's nicely centrally located to all of the students and families in our city. Two more things. One is the collection schedule. I just want to, we're going to be sending out a postcard to all of our residents, but just as a reminder, Christmas and New Year's falls on a Monday, so we are pushing those customers back to Saturday. So we're going to be picking up our Monday customers on the Saturday before each of those holidays. A postcard just similar to this in English and Spanish will be going out. We typically do it towards the beginning of December so that it doesn't get lost in all the other mail and such. And then one other thing before I finish, I wanted to remind, also talk about, we are doing the tree recycling. That's another insert that's going to be going out in this next, in the October billing and the November billing, advising customers that we are picking up their trees, how to get rid of them, and that we do not schedule bulky item cleanups the first two weeks in January to allow for those drivers to sweep the city and get those trees off the street, so there's no hazards or anything else. So that was my presentation. I hope I kept it under five minutes. Again, thank you for letting me be here, and that's it.
Thank you very much for the update and information. We'll get comments at the very end. So I have one more item under announcements, D, and that is Veterans Day Observance at the Golden Gate National Cemetery, which is obviously located at 1300 Sneeath Lane, Veterans Way in the honor of. Joining us, or joining the Avenue of Flags, and again, it starts at 11:00 AM. The band concert begins at 10:30 AM. And so again, that is done by the Avenue of Flags Committee. So with that, are there any public comments on any of the items for announcements or presentations?
I do not have any speaker cards.
Okay. Now we can move to council. If there's any questions or comments on any of those items. I did want to say that on the church, they have always been to the county. They were there for the COVID injections and testing. They've also been there for the city and Recology to do that. I've sent a letter of thanks and appreciation. They also send out a good number of volunteers, and this year was probably the most volunteers we've ever had. And thanks to them, it expedited it to where in the first 30, 35 minutes, 102 vehicles got through the line. So by the end, there was no wait. So it was a great collaborative effort by people. Any colleagues, questions or comments? Councilman Medina.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I wanted to acknowledge and thank Recology for that effort. It continually gets better each year. Having the cars to be able to pull up on each side and with those compacters there, it's amazing to watch how quickly it can take a sofa or just about anything and just smash it all up. So I wanted to thank you for that and also thank you and your staff. I signed up to reduce from the 20-gallon to a 16-gallon toter online. By the next day, I got confirmation that the toter will be out there on Friday. So just wanted to acknowledge that and encourage those residents that if they want to challenge themselves, and if you are not filling up your 20-gallon toter, you have the option to reduce the size and save a little bit of money. So thank you for all that, Kirsten.
Anyone else? If not, we will move on to item six, Consent Calendar. All items are considered routine or implemented earlier council action, may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested. There will be one simple public comment, period, for all items in this section unless a council member requests to pull an item for a separate vote. Is there any counsel for a separate vote? As far as any counsel for items for additional comment or question, I do have one, which is item E. Is there any one else?
I also had E.
Okay. With nothing...
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Item D.
D? Okay, thank you.
As in top dog?
Okay. All right, let's go to item D. Consider adoption of a resolution establishing a pilot 15-mile-per-hour school zone speed limit while children are going to or leaving Monte Verde Elementary School.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. I felt that it was important to pull this item to allow staff to advise our community of the efforts that they're going through to improve our community safety, and also to remind our residents that as you're dropping your children off at school, just to kind of chill out and take a little bit more time. We often hear of the speeding that is occurring around schools as parents are rushing to drop off their kids. So over at Monte Verde School, I was hoping that staff could briefly kind of give us a little bit of a take on what's happening. I did advise the staff that in advance that I was going to call this item. So thank you very much.
Well, that's probably why Director Lee's walking to the podium. Director.
Good evening, Council. Through the, through the mayor, my name is Matt Lee, Public Works Director for the City of San Bruno. So Councilmember Medina is correct, we are working with South San Francisco in partnership to do a pilot 15-mile-an-hour signage adjustment around Monte Verde School. It's in partnership with South San Francisco because the school actually resides on both sides of the city limits. So there are certain streets that reside in San Bruno and other streets that reside in South San Francisco. Although South San Francisco has an entire citywide program for 15-mile-an-hour zone, the City of San Bruno has kind of been going through that effort through the Safe Routes to School Plan that was adopted in February 2023. And in August of 2022, there was a discussion on council about a 15-mile-an-hour zone. We're using this implementation of 15 miles an hour as a pilot project for us, so we can do before and after studies to see if there are any effects on speeding and how enforceability would apply in this scenario. And all that is kind of described in the staff report itself. But the City of San Bruno is committed to having safer routes to school. And so these are one of the avenues we're exploring because this was recommended as part of the plan.
Okay, thank you very much, Director Lee. Item E, Consider adoption of a resolution accepting a multi-agency Board of State and Community Corrections. It's called BSCC Grant. This is organized, and the theft was awarded to Daily City, kind of took the lead. However, this was City of San Mateo, City of San Bruno, and City of Daily City who applied. And it was appropriating $1.6 million in the federal grant, federal state grants, special revenue fund to the police department, equipment supplies, training, and overtime enforcement, and investigative task force work eligibility under this grant. And so I just, again, I think for the City of San Bruno, A, it's collaborative, it's working together, but it's also something that this community needs, and it's a significant grant that the city has been awarded. So I just wanted the community to have a little understanding of that, and I appreciate it. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I appreciate the opportunity to showcase this a bit because I think it is a great accomplishment and something that will serve the city quite well. I do have a couple of brief slides, just because I thought it would make it easier for me to share with you all exactly what's going on here. But essentially, as you mentioned, we've secured an organized retail theft grant from the BSCC, the Bureau of State and Community Corrections. Where this spawned from is that there's been a massive spike in theft-related offenses statewide over the last few years, and retail has definitely been hit the hardest of any of the areas that have been impacted. In fact, they estimated more than $80 billion in losses a year at this point due to retail theft. Regional centers and larger retailers are the ones that are hit the hardest, and we have both here in the City of San Bruno. And they are being hit most heavily by organized and large-scale thefts, which many of us have seen even on television, with people walking into large retailers, filling up entire shopping baskets, and simply rolling them out with huge amounts of merchandise. And we all pay the price for this, obviously. Our costs go up. I know a lot of people have expressed feelings of not being safe going to stores because they're seeing these things happen while they're there trying to shop. And quite frankly, it's difficult for us to handle. You know, San Bruno, Daily City, and San Mateo joined in on this effort because we are the three cities within the county that have large regional shopping centers and are most impacted by this problem. And these curtailment efforts have increasingly fallen on police departments because most large retailers have restricted or eliminated their loss prevention programs. And so typically, people look to the police department to solve these problems. And we are limited in resources, not only in terms of personnel, but technology and other capabilities to address this ever-expanding problem. So we collaborated with Daily City and San Mateo in this effort because we believe that a multi-pronged approach was the best way to address this wicked problem, namely through a joint task force model that would leverage all of our resources together so that we could get enough personnel honed in and focused on the retail theft problem to not only increase the visible enforcement and the presence, but to also increase our ability to conduct competent investigations behind the scenes. As these retail theft operations become increasingly advanced, it's important that we are looking at the rings and the fencing sources or where they are able to sell stolen property that are facilitating the ongoing theft, rather than simply showing up when a theft is occurring and attempting to arrest the person making it. We also wanted to make sure we could leverage technologies, a lot of which we already have here in San Bruno, but which could be significantly expanded, specifically our ability to share data and info, not only from law enforcement agency to law enforcement agency, but open source data among our private partners, the security teams that work at malls like Tanforan, that can be our eyes and ears on the ground. And then some effort to get some fleeing vehicle tracking and to expand our license plate reader program is kind of what we focused on. And of course, as always, we focus on education and some advocacy to make sure that we can help to correct the problem at its source. The reality is that all of this comes at a significant expense, and budgets are always tight as are staff and personnel resources. And so the Board of State and Community Corrections was kind enough to announce a grant opportunity. We already receive an officer wellness grant through this same entity. This entity has been very focused on improving safety in our communities by providing much-needed funding to jurisdictions. They organized this theft grant would be available in 2023, and it was open to every single policing entity in the state of California. To give you an idea of how large that might be, there's 23 in San Mateo County alone. And statewide, only 51 agencies received funding through their applications. And we were fortunate enough to be one of those. And not a small amount of funding. We've established a regional task force is what we pitched to the BSCC for all of the things I previously mentioned. And San Bruno was able to secure $1.6 million in funding to support those efforts through fiscal year 2627. These funds go to pay for very specific things that you ask for in the grant and that the grant provider says, yes, these are consistent with the grant objectives. And what those are in this case is about $340,000 for overtime to staff that task force, $303,000 to purchase additional license plate reader cameras. Those cameras will be focused on fortifying our retail areas so that you essentially cannot come or go from those areas without us picking up a license plate read. A big cost here is the deployment of a program called C3 AI. This is the info-sharing platform I previously mentioned that we're very, very excited about. Purchase of StarChase at 94,000, this is a program or a system that actually gets installed on police cars. It allows a police car to fire a GPS projectile at a fleeing vehicle so that we can track it in real time. This will be huge for community safety because, quite honestly, we intervene in these crimes like in the mall area all the time. And as soon as a cop car gets behind them, they take off. And pursuits are dangerous. Pursuits are dangerous for the public, for the suspect, and for the cops. And oftentimes, in these cases, you're dealing with a property crime. And so expanding our capability to track that vehicle, pick up the suspects in a safer manner than having to chase it quite so frequently is very exciting to us. And then some money in there for education efforts and training. So finally, I just appreciate you allowing me to come up because I think it's important for me to thank Daily City. Daily City took the lead on this. They're the reporting agency. Their administrative assistant, Trent Waterman, has been instrumental in the effort to secure the grant, and he will be instrumental in administering the grant, which takes a huge workload off of San Bruno. It's the one thing to get a grant. It's another thing to have to administer it and do all the processing of it. And Daily City taking that lead is huge. And also the chief in Daily City, Cameron Christensen, and chief Ed Barberini in San Mateo, and of course, the Board of State and Community Corrections. And last, but most certainly not least, you, Council, for being willing to accept these types of funds and for always encouraging staff to go after grant funding to initiate these types of programs.
Thank you very much, Chief, for that information and detail. And I think that it's helpful. And congratulations to all the entities. Councilmembers Salazar and then Vice Mayor Hamilton.
And thank you, Chief, for that information. I wasn't going to, I hadn't thought about pulling this item, but there were some questions I had on this when I was reading through the staff report. One of them, specifically, there was a lot of language in the agreement about the funds being available, available subject to the state funding the program. And we're And we're looking at north of $1 million of investment in equipment, and I'm just wondering, is the timing of that going to be subject to us knowing that those funds are going to be available, being that we're kind of relying on Daily City to reimburse us after we make the payment? So I was wondering, what kind of guarantees do we have that the funds will actually be available when we go to request a reimbursement?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. So they've installed a system of checks and balances where purchases have to be approved, not only in the grant, but prior to making the purchase, we apply for it through BSCC via Daily City, and then the grant BSCC signs off, says, yes, you want to write a $300,000 check for license plate reader cameras, it's approved. And so write it and then put in for your reimbursement, and it'll be reimbursed. So rather than just spending and crossing our fingers, they have an approval mechanism.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't, I don't remember seeing that language so prominent in an agreement before, so I was concerned about that. And the other question I had is, it seems like a lot of this program is really focused on catching these criminals after they've committed the act. And I've also noticed that in our police blotter, when we get the reports, it seems like a lot of times we'll apprehend these people and then cite them and let them go, and likely they'll go commit the same crime again. And so we're spending a lot of money statewide on apprehending these people, and I know we're going to do a better job of tracking them, but ultimately, until, you know, the state allows us to actually have a real deterrent to committing those crimes, I'm just wondering how effective we really expect programs like this to be.
Yeah, it's an excellent point, and most of what you're speaking of are misdemeanor-level theft arrests, so when we get a report of shoplifting at the mall and police officers show up, those folks are going to get a ticket. And quite frankly, they were getting a ticket long before reforms like Prop 47 and Prop 57 in California. Now, we unfortunately have a situation where even if we can book into jail, typically the jail in most cases is going to cite and release those folks contemporaneously. What I can tell you that's a bit interesting is this anti, or this decarceration sort of concept is a bit of a myth, because what we've seen simultaneously with this is an uptick in warrant arrests of almost 2,000%. So what actually happens is they get tickets, and then they don't show up in court, and then they get warrants, and then they get arrested and booked into jail anyway. So it does ultimately catch up with them. In this case, the focus will be much more on large-scale thefts, theft rings, and burglaries, quite frankly, so planned thefts where we can show premeditation that then brings in a burglary charge, which is a felony. So those will typically result in bookings in most cases, but your point is still well-taken. It will happen that we make an arrest, and within 24 or 48 hours, that same suspect is back here doing the same thing again.
All right, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I think several of us asked that, when we saw this item come through on consent, asked that it be pulled because we really wanted, at least I really wanted, us to shine a light on this, because this is such a significant win for San Bruno, and I wanted to thank you and the department and our partners in Daily City and in San Mateo for identifying this opportunity and going out and going out and securing it. We've all seen the impact of increased retail thefts across San Bruno, but especially at Tan Faran, and this grant's going to help us with the manpower and the technology to help us to respond to it. I also appreciate that, as reading through the, reading through the agreement, that measuring the impact that this program has is built into the plan, so we can see how effective it is over time, and I'm happy to support this, and thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any comments from any of the members of the public on consent? Seeing, hearing, none, thank you, Chief. Okay, with that, we have items 6A through 6I. Any action from council?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion, Salazar, second, Hamilton, to approve consent. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous, 5-0. Now we'll move on to the next item, which is item 7, public hearings.
Item 7A, consider introducing reading by title only and waiving further reading of an ordinance entitled "In ordinance of the City of San Bruno amending Title VII vehicles and traffic to add regulations relating to paid on and off-street parking areas in the city and making a finding of exemption under CEQA and holding a public hearing to adopt a resolution adopting rates and regulations for parking, paid parking on city-owned or controlled on and off-street parking facilities, amending the master fee schedule to include parking rates, and determining the project is exempt under the California Environmental Quality Act.
Thank you very much, and thank you again, Chief. You didn't have to walk away, but appreciate it, and thank you for, go ahead with your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Once again, I'm Ryan Johansson, your Chief of Police. Happy to be presenting this item or bringing this item forward again, I should probably say, as it's been a bit of a process, and it's not the first time we've been discussing it. I am not going to repeat the extremely wordy language that our clerk was kind enough to put out there for me, if that's okay, but those are the purposes of this item this evening. In terms of agenda, we'll go over a very brief background because I think we're all fairly aware of where, what we've done to get here, then an overview of the proposed policies pertaining to the paid parking program, a little discussion of the provisions for discounted rate programs for businesses, a brief review of fiscal impacts and estimates, and then some discussion of the next steps, and of course, taking your questions and feedback. In terms of the background, as mentioned previously, a lot of this stems from the San Bruno Downtown Parking Study and Final Parking Management Plan from January of 2019. I've included a link to that plan here in the slide, as I have done in the past, in case folks would like to look at it. But that report churned out a bunch of takeaways specifically about the parking challenges in our downtown corridor and in the business area there. Among the key ones that are relevant to our discussion this evening, that on-street parking on San Mateo Avenue was often at 100% plus capacity, that the lots, meaning the public parking lots in those same areas, are often well below capacity, that the weekend and midday parking occupancy is the heaviest on San Mateo Avenue and on the nearby side streets, that there is a very high demand for residential parking in the surrounding areas that exacerbates the problem, and that vehicles on San Mateo Avenue are often parking well in excess of the two-hour limit, especially on weekends. The key recommendations that are relevant to our conversation tonight that came out of that report are that the implementation of a paid parking program in the downtown area would help to alleviate many of these problems, that we should push for longer-term parkers to go into the lots and off of the street, that we should increase parking turnover on San Mateo Avenue, and that we should consider offering overnight parking in the public lots for residents who are otherwise dealing with extremely impacted parking problems. And so in fiscal year 2021, City Council established a strategic initiative specifically to expand our parking enforcement capabilities citywide and to establish a metered parking program in the downtown area, and that's why we're here this evening. At a high level, the objective here was to take about 835 spaces and make them into paid parking spaces. This includes both on-street and in-city lots, and we are in need of policies to authorize paid parking in specific locations and to establish a comprehensive set of paid parking policies for on-street parking and off-street parking in city lots. There is a new municipal code ordinance, which is attached to the staff report that we're speaking about this evening, as well as a new city council, city council resolution to adopt specific rate ranges and other regulations that are needed to deploy this program. All of this is within your authority under Section 32 and Section 22508 of the California Vehicle Code. So our progress to this point towards the initiative, just to kind of recap for folks who may be coming in kind of in the final hour, this has been going on for a very long time, and so if I appear to be abbreviated this evening, that's why, in an effort to get to the core points we need to address. But at a high level, we had staff reports and presentations to council in March and November of 2022. On April 11th of 2023, council adopted two separate resolutions, one to create the Parking Enterprise Fund, one to authorize a contract with T2 Systems in order to begin installing meters. I'm sorry, also a third resolution on that same date to establish a contract partnership with Laz Parking, citywide parking enforcement. On the 26th of September was the most recent meeting where we discussed this, this was a study session. Staff requested City Council provide feedback and direction primarily on three specific areas. That was parking rate range for on and off-street parking spaces, the days and times for parking requirements and subsequent enforcement, and to consider some of the local business impact considerations. And some of the key feedback that staff took from that meeting is listed here. One was to consider removing the low end of the rate range and instead base the range simply on a maximum, which certainly made logical sense, to remove some of the spaces in front of City Hall on El Camino Real that were designated to become paid parking, so that folks conducting business with City Hall would still have a place to park without having to pay to run in and pay a bill or exchange some other sort of business, to assess the financial viability of starting rates at the lower end of the range that we had proposed, to consider monthly parking permit options, to assess how existing short-term parking zones would be handled under this new program, to evaluate the appropriateness of exempting Sundays and/or certain holidays from paid parking requirements, to evaluate the impacts of the proposed policy to provide two discounted up to 100% permits to local businesses, and to explore alternative models to reduce the impacts to those businesses of this program, and to provide some modeling as to the fiscal outlook of the program based on the final recommendations as they're coming to you this evening. It's important to note here, I think, that during the 9/26 study session, there was also significant public comment and some council concern regarding clarifying how funds generated from this program would be deposited and utilized by the city. The prior council action, as I said earlier, established a Parking Enterprise Fund where these revenues are to be deposited. Pursuant to the adopted fund balance policy, this fund serves to account for costs to install and manage this paid parking program. Staff will, of course, analyze the appropriate use of this fund and return to the City Council in a future meeting, but this is beyond the scope of what we're presenting to you this evening. Just thought that it merited mentioning. So this is a revised metering map. This map has been shown and seen in prior staff reports. The only real change here, you'll see above, the yellow area with the letter A is a small blank spot on El Camino Real. That represents the zone that we have removed from paid parking in order to accommodate business at City Hall, as I previously mentioned. An overview of the proposed policies that are coming to you this evening, just a reminder that the draft paid parking policies have been developed to accomplish these following purposes and objectives, essentially to establish parking meter areas, required methods of parking, parking controls, removal authority for unlawfully parked vehicles, parking space use restrictions, and other regulatory provisions related to this paid parking program. Also to establish the ability of the City Council to adopt a resolution establishing a range of meter rates, days and hours of paid parking enforcement, time limits, and methodology for periodic adjustment of parking meter rates for these designated paid parking areas, and to formally establish City Hall employee parking lot as a public parking lot during non-business hours. So what we're bringing to you is a proposal for adjustable parking meter rates to optimize management and the use of occupancy. The target occupancy rate of 85% is recommended to be established in the resolution as the goal to be sought and achieved with the rate structure for parking meters, as well as the periodic adjustment, everything being done with this emphasis of looking at real data and trying to get us to that 85% target that was proposed in the 2019 report. Occupancy rate, by the way, obviously refers to the percentage of public parking, parking spaces that are occupied by a vehicle during a given timeframe. We're shooting for 85% across the board in the lots and on the street, whereas before we're in excess of 100 on the street and well below 85 in the lots. So these parking rates are all proposed with the goal, again, of getting to that 85% rate. The intention here is for staff to obtain utilization data, so with the T2 metering systems, we'll have something we've never had before, including in the 2019 study, which is real data about who's parking where and when, and for what durations. And so this will enable us to sort of treat this like a pilot and to learn from real data for the first time and to adjust policies as needed based on what we're figuring out is actually occurring downtown regarding parking. This performance pricing model being suggested is used successfully in many jurisdictions. It is nothing new that we're bringing to you. Currently, the suggestion is that the rate adjusting would be by me as the Chief of Police or the designee of the Chief of Police within the established limits. I'd like to note here that the only reason for that really has to do with access to the data. The Police Department, as a matter of municipal code, must manage the permit program and the paid parking program, and so as a result, we are the ones who have firsthand access to the parking data and are probably best positioned to adjust rates as needed in order to achieve this 85% occupancy. No other motivation for it sitting with the Police Department as it's additional work, and we don't need more work. So the proposed on-street rates, you can see the only change here from the last meeting is that the minimum moved from, I believe what was 50 or a dollar here for on-street to zero. Council would have the flexibility to adjust even all the way down to nothing if that became appropriate at some point. And again, up to the same maximum previously proposed of $3 per hour. We would propose enforcement seven days a week. It's a bit confusing that we put Monday through Sunday here. I apologize, that means every day, just to clarify, and the enforcement would be from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. These areas will remain two-hour maximums, which they've been all along, but as I've reported in the past, that's something we've not been enforcing for quite some time due to challenges with not being legally able to chalk tires and not having a license plate reader-based system to conduct time parking enforcement. Now, the time parking will be enforced a bit different because the reality is the metering system will only allow you to pay for up to two hours. So instead of necessarily being cited for being there in excess of two hours, you'll be getting cited for not paying to be parked there, because after two hours, you will not be able to pay to be parked there any longer. You'll have to move the car. For off-street rates, again, the only change here is removing that minimum, taking it down to zero. Again, this will be 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. The point of the earlier end time is to allow for public parking by residents in the lots during the evening hours, which will hopefully help to alleviate some of the impacted parking in the adjacent neighborhoods. Again, seven days a week enforcement, these lots will have a 10-hour maximum. The thought of the 10-hour maximum is, A, that's the way they've always been for most of those lots, B, it will allow for employees or people who are working long hours to get the bulk of their workday, if not all of it, without having to move their car. One thing we did not talk about in detail last time is my intentions, if you maintain this authority with the rates, as to where we would start those rates. My intention at this point would be to start the on-street spaces at $1.50 per hour and to start the off-street spaces at $1 for two hours, $2 for five hours, and $3 for eight hours. The thought process behind this is that these off-street rates are at a substantial discount versus the on-street rates, especially for longer durations, which is consistent with the recommendation in the 2019 study to try and drive longer-term parkers into lots and off of San Mateo Avenue. The reason that we have batched together the off-street rates in our multiple-hour increments is because of the revelation that there are substantial fees associated with processing credit card payments through the system here, and we need to bring the minimum transaction amount up to a level where the city is at least a net positive and covering its costs even at the smaller transactions. And so setting up a program where they're still only paying 50 cents per hour, which is where we want it to be, but they'll have this two-hour minimum, which ensures the transaction is at least a dollar, which will offset those transaction fees. This was a very important catch by our new Chief Financial Officer, and this is why we're accommodating for it with these multiple-hour batches. Additionally, longer-term parkers will now be paying as little as about 38 cents per hour if they're purchasing all-day parking in the lots, which seems more than reasonable even compared to other jurisdictions all around us, and hopefully reduces the impacts that we expressed to you last time, some businesses that have customers that are visiting for lengthy periods of time, such as the swim school or some of the dojos downtown that might have multiple children taking multiple classes for six, seven hours at a time. This will allow for a much more cost-effective parking method for them, and at the same time, drive them off the street so that there's better parking turnover for the shorter-term parkers. Again, the adjustable rates are critical, in my opinion, to optimize management of the use and occupancy of the parking spaces. I think that it's important, as I previously reported, that we be as malleable as possible, and it seems to me the way to be as malleable as possible is to leave that authority and the capability with the Police Department where the data will reside. Again, the target occupancy rate of 85%, we want that established in the resolution so that you're giving the Chief of Police some guiding principles as to how he or she should be basing their rate increases or reductions, not just arbitrary, but based on looking at actual occupancy rates, seeing the delta between that and the 85% we're targeting, and then making adjustments accordingly. Additionally, the Chief of Police or their designee will conduct regular meetings with the downtown business stakeholders. I think this is important because not all of the valuable input is data. Actually talking to the people running businesses downtown, which I've been doing a lot of over the last few months on this specific item, reveals things that I would have never thought to think about, because quite frankly, I'm not running a business downtown. And while we'll never be able to accommodate all of their asks or requests, I think it's important to give them a voice and for that voice to be considered as we're making adjustments to this program along the way. The answer to the question of existing short-term parking zones, these are chiefly the 24-minute loading zones, is that they'll remain in effect and allow free parking at no, parking at no charge. However, they will only be able to park for that limited time, and as we've mentioned, this step up of enforcement, Laz will be actively enforcing those loading zones at the 24-minute mark, so they'll hopefully only be getting used by people who actually need that short term. We're thinking here about our DoorDash and other food delivery. We're thinking here about our DoorDash and other food delivery services, delivery workers, delivery employees who work at the actual businesses, things along those lines. We also recommend, staff is recommending exempting the following holidays from paid parking. This serves a couple of purposes. One, I think, just to show of good faith. In addition, it also helps us to not have to staff quite so much with Laz and the other resources on holidays, which can be challenging, but we're minimizing them so that there's not too much of an impact because the reality is even on holidays, parking is impacted, and I think policing it is important. So Thanksgiving Day, December 25th, Christmas Day, and January 1st, New Year's Day are what we're proposing at this point. Section 6 of the resolution also establishes your authority to temporarily suspend paid parking requirements for a variety of different reasons. So if there was some point at which council wanted to support some sort of downtown business function, or there was going to be some other reason why you wanted to temporarily suspend the paid parking requirements, that's something that you would have the absolute authority to do. An example might be that many jurisdictions do this to support specific shopping days during the holiday season, where you might see like the decorative red canvas that goes over a parking meter saying, "Hey, compliments of the city of San Bruno, your parking is free today. Please enjoy your local businesses." These are the types of things you would be free to do under the policy. Staff does recommend that the paid parking be enforced seven days a week. The discounted rates for downtown businesses. So when I last came and presented to you, the suggestion of staff was to provide up to two vehicle permits, monthly permits, for each physical address downtown business with up to a 100% discount. I think the feedback from council was well-heard that we didn't really need to have it be up to a 100% discount, that the desire was to provide some measure of free parking to downtown businesses to minimize the impact this has on their operations. And so returning to you this evening, that is the suggestion of staff, that there be two per physical address that would be eligible for a free monthly parking permit. This will be based upon license plate, so these won't be exchangeable from car to car, which is necessary for the efficiency of enforcement, but they will be able to apply through the police department. Those applications will have to come from the person designated as the responsible party for the business, so it will typically be the owner. If the owner wishes to designate a manager, we'll have a mechanism for them to do that. They'll be able to come in and apply for permits, change the license plate associated with the permit as staff comes and goes throughout the year. This will be limited only to downtown businesses and their employees, and it will be for off-street parking lots only. This will not permit them to park on-street. I think this is very important, as a lot of the input I've gotten from the local businesses is that, quite frankly, in many cases, it's the local businesses that are responsible for some of the impacted parking. Because if you park right in front of your own business, but you're there all day, you are in fact taking away parking for two-hour rotation that we're looking for for customers. And so these employees and owners would only be permitted to park in the off-street lots unless they choose to pay the full on-street rate and move their car every two hours, which, of course, they would be free to do, but that's what would be required. We heard the feedback that two may not be enough for a lot of businesses, which certainly makes sense. There are businesses down there with 20 or 30 employees. And so what we've attempted to do here is develop a program that would not limit the number of permits that a business could get, but leave it really up to them, require that they be only for business employees and owners, and we'll have a vetting process, a permit application through the PD to confirm that, but where they could purchase a discounted monthly permit. The recommended price set is $30 per month per license plate. This represents more than a 50% discount off even the eight-hour paid rate that I mentioned was about 38 cents per hour, so it would bring it down to about 19 cents per hour for employee parking, which is really, at the end of the day, well below the costs per space of maintaining this program. But I think when you look at the program holistically, as you'll see in the fiscal slides, that it makes sense and that we can sustain doing this. Again, for use by business owners and their employees only, again, it would allow parking only in the off-street lots and not on the street. And again, it would require an approval process through the police department, which frankly we're yet to establish, but we do have some past practice here that should make it fairly easy for us to stand up a system where they can apply online, we can vet it out, and issue permits digitally through the system. In terms of fiscal impacts, I will attempt briefly to cover what our chief financial officer has been kind enough to include here, and then I think I will defer any questions to him as he's much better poised to answer them than I am. But at your request, he raced to provide some modeling, and this is what it turned up, that we have about 1.472 million in annual expenditure requirements to maintain and continue the program. This includes the parking enforcement contract, the kiosk cost prorated over the span of the entire contract, the repayment of the general fund loan that was provided to start this program, including principal and interest, program management costs, which occur at the city level in a number of different departments, and to establish a fund reserve. He is projecting about 1.46 million in projected annual revenue at the recommended rates, being $1.50 an hour on-street and the $1, $2, and $3 settings for off-street. The assumptions in that are listed here. I won't go through them. They are in the staff report. I think that they are, at least in my very humble opinion, more than sound, and I certainly trust our chief financial officer's judgment in how he has brought these projections to you, and this is where they sit at this point in time. So the only next steps at this point is, again, we're bringing this back following that meeting on the 26th of September, is, as was previously read by the city clerk and our request that we actually take action in moving this item forward. We've previously articulated that we have a target start date of first of the year, and I think it's very important at this point in time, especially given the litany of information that has been provided over a long period of time, that we make the best effort to move it forward, or we'll have to reevaluate that particular target date. That concludes my presentation. Certainly happy to take any questions.
Thank you, chief. And what we'll do is, we'll see if council has any questions on the presentation, then I'd like to open it up to any of the members of the public that are here, and then to hear your comments and concerns or questions, and then bring it back to council for further direction and/or action. So with that, questions to the chief on the presentation. Vice Mayor.
So I have just one question on the presentation that has to do with the establishing of the fund reserve, and this might be a question for the CFO. What is the level of that reserve? A certain percentage or whatever? Thank you.
CFO?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And my name's Nick Pagaros. I'm the chief financial officer for the city. The initial target for the fund reserve is to cover one year of operation expense, and this is really an effort of fiscal prudence to ensure that if there ever were another situation where businesses shut down due to a catastrophic event like COVID, that the program would have sufficient funds without bearing a burden on the general fund.
So we're going to slowly pay into it with the intention of getting it up to a one-year's level?
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Other questions on the presentation? Councilmember Salazar.
Thank you. Our contract with our vendors, is there any language in there that would allow us to either suspend the need to... I just thought of this right now, as our CFO was talking about, you know, potentially having a downpour, say, another pandemic where all of a sudden, nobody's going downtown, nobody's parking there, we've got zero revenue coming in. Are we still on the hook for paying for the whole program?
I'm not. I don't actually know the answer to that question in terms of a clause that would allow for temporary suspension.
I'm Mayor Mina. People are looking my direction, and we can look at the contract for that. I don't know off the top of my head, and I don't think the contract is in this agenda packet, so we could get back to you with that answer. Councilmember Salazar.
Thank you. Knock on wood, that won't happen again in our lifetime.
I do think maybe important to note that the contract with Laz for enforcement is probably the one that would be most relevant there because the contract with T2 is to put in the kiosks, and that's pretty much done. And Laz, remember, the contract is for citywide parking enforcement. So while we did, in fact, suspend that for a period of time during COVID, barring something that extreme, which I've not seen in my 20-plus-year career to that point, and hopefully we'll never see again, even if we were to suspend enforcement in some area, like downtown due to some sort of a problem, I would anticipate that citywide enforcement would continue to some degree.
Okay. All right. Fair enough. And also, the data that was provided, definitely appreciate all staff's work on getting us some more numbers around that. I'm definitely in agreement with the proposed rate that would get us to basically break even based on our projected expenses. I had one question about one of the line items in the projected expense, which is our program management line, expected to be annual cost of $50,000, and that includes the cost of the discounted permits. So I'm wondering, with understanding what's included in that line item, does that then limit how many discounted programs and how many free permits we can give out per year without impacting that and the other items that are included in that line?
Yes. Thank you, councilmember. That particular line is intended, as you mentioned, to both capture or offset the cost of discounted permits. That's the bulk of the $50,000 cost there, not fully understanding how many we will issue, what the demand will be. That's sort of my best guesstimate. Really, a smaller piece of that will be direct charges that the police department, who's administering this program, will charge back to, you know, register the license plate numbers, issue the permits, et cetera. And that really is intended to offset the impact on the general fund for this program.
Okay. Thank you. And another thought I had, you know, as we start getting deeper into this, just functionally, the system that we're putting in is going to require everyone to remember their license plate number. And so if I walk up to the kiosk and I fat finger my number and I put somebody else's license plate number in there, what happens then? Do I get a ticket, or is there something in there that would say, "Oh, this one is close. Maybe this is what they meant"?
Unfortunately, no, but there is an appeal mechanism. And fortunately, as is typically the case with San Bruno, when you appeal that ticket, it's not going off somewhere into the ether, it's coming to the San Bruno Police Department. And I think that, I feel very confident that my traffic sergeant, who handles the initial appeals, would pretty quickly identify that there was an issue of a fat fingering and that that's why the number gets transposed. But yeah, you will have to remember your license plate if you're using the kiosk. If you're using the app, I'm sure most of you have experienced using those apps before, it will save your various license plates and vehicles into the app, and you just indicate which one of them you're parking and for how long, and pay that way. But it is a bit of a pain to have to remember. I will say, we're not talking about kiosks every block here. There's 80 kiosks being installed in the parking area, so we're talking about, I think, the furthest distance from any space to any kiosk at this point is like 15 yards. So hopefully, it's close enough to remember, or maybe we take a picture of the plate, but it will be an issue.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. And on the off-street rates, we saw the highest one being $3 for eight hours, but elsewhere in the report, it said that we would enforce 10 hours a day. So those last two hours, how would we charge for those? Or will there be another 10-hour tier at the same basic rate? How does that work?
Yeah, you would... So if you were to park right when parking enforcement started and be there for 10 hours, under this plan, you would need to, you could purchase eight, and then you'd have to purchase at another dollar, two more hours. Yeah, there isn't currently in there a designation for 10 hours of parking.
Okay. But that could be a need, say, if, you know, you're working a full shift, or you're a store owner, and you're going to be there from an hour before opening to an hour past, it would be nice to have, assuming you don't have one of the freebies, I guess.
Yeah, I think the hope is that with the program, the way it's set up now, those folks would have either a free permit, or they'd be purchasing the monthly permit because it's notably cheaper than paying for the eight hours. But nonetheless, this is not something that occurred to me in structuring this, so it's valid feedback.
Yeah, and potentially, there could be residents that are willing to pay, even though, you know, they live across the street or two blocks away, but they're willing to pay, you know, some amount of money to leave their cars there during the day, and I guess we can't deny them that.
True. Yes, sir.
And as far as the proposed holidays, I think that's probably okay, but how, aside from, you know, putting bags over the kiosks, how would we let people know that there's no charge on a particular day? Would it just be not enforced, and people could still pay?
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. The kiosk won't let you pay. So when you go to pay for your parking, or you pull up the app, it will say parking is currently free. You don't need to pay for it. So it won't allow them to pay.
They'll get that feedback at some point. Okay. And the frequency of enforcement, so if they'll also be able to cite in the loading zones, how often do we anticipate that somebody will make a full circuit of all the lots in the street?
A lot. The enforcement down there will be concentrated downtown before we start expanding citywide, and there will be multiple license plate reader vehicles for just that really quite small area. So again, the goal here, through some significant public outreach and some warning periods, like we've discussed in the past, will be a huge saturation out of the gate to send the message that this is going to be watched and enforced with the hope of that steering behavior, and giving us the ability to maybe step out enforcement a little bit wider and expand the amount of time in between passes. But at this point, I'm extremely convinced that throughout the bulk of the business day, they will be past those loading zones at least every 24 minutes.
Okay. Great. And also in terms of the procedures, you know, there was a concern about the actual ticketing vehicles blocking traffic while they're issuing tickets. Is there any potential to sort of have a program where the vehicles are identified and then have somebody else follow up to issue the citation so that the vehicle that's actually scanning the plates doesn't have to stay in the roadway for longer than necessary? Is that a possibility?
The short answer is yes. There's actually a number of possibilities there, all of which we'll be looking into. When it's license plate reader-based, the problem is there's not, currently, the license plate reader technology is not so advanced to work in a handheld device that someone can just walk down the sidewalk and do the sighting, but I think we're getting there very quickly. In the meantime, there are a variety of mechanisms that can be used, including a bit of an advanced version of what you're suggesting, which would be to have the license plate reader vehicle go by, ping vehicles that are due for citation, have that communicated to someone who's walking on the sidewalk issuing tickets. All of those are things that I think, as we launch the program, we'll evaluate as we look at the impacts of the double parking. I think it is worth noting that while that concern has been brought up repeatedly and is valid, all the enforcement we did for 60 years down there prior to not being able to chalk tires involved double parking vehicles, and in those cases, for much longer periods of time. This new mechanism, I mean, a sighting officer steps out of their vehicle, confirms that there's no handicap placard and that the vehicle should be sighted, and hits a print button, and then the ticket goes in the windshield and they get in their car and move on. And so I would hope that the double parking impact will be minimal, but we will have to watch it over time and see how it impacts traffic down there.
Okay. And there was a time when we had those little metering trucks, then those were easier to get around, but I don't think we've had one of those in many, many years.
Yeah, it's been a long time.
Yeah. Okay. Let's see. I think that may have been it. Oh, I also wanted to ask, just a clarification in terms of what responsibilities we can hand over to our vendor, and pretty much ticketing for parking is all that we can authorize them to do, right? Anything else would require a uniformed officer to enforce?
Yeah, so any moving violations, those need to be handled by a sworn peace officer per state law, right? So that being said, there are some weird gray areas there. Double parking is one of them. So double parking is a parking citation, not a moving violation. But we do have a safety interest in not having these non-sworn enforcement individuals. We're trying to minimize their contact with people because those are the things that have the potential to not go well if someone gets very upset. And whereas a police officer possesses the training and the equipment to address that, we don't really want Laz parking officials being accosted down on the avenue because they're addressing drivers who are double parked. So our initial plan is to give them full license to cite double-parked vehicles that are unoccupied, which is, I don't know in what percentage of the cases, but in my experience driving down San Mateo Avenue, there's a lot of them. It's park the car and run into the business for five or 10 minutes. Because we're going to have a lot of oversight of having police officers downtown during this same timeframe, that's also because, like, one of the big problems down there is illegal U-turns, and they cannot enforce that, to be abundantly clear. But the thought is that combining the physical presence of all these new Laz vehicles with a huge uptick in presence of police vehicles down there handling the moving violations can establish a tone of, this is the new normal. This is the enforcement you're going to see and hopefully begin to correct some of those behaviors. But no, they cannot address moving violations at all. But no, they cannot address moving violations at all.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you. Yeah, the U-turn has come up and I've been asked so, but I didn't have the legal knowledge of that, but they cannot. Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, Chief. In your presentation, the, we will be able to obtain data from the T2 meter system. And this analysis or report is something that we can just generate a report on a daily basis? Is that something that this T2 is able to provide the staff?
They won't actually have to provide it, so we'll have access to the back office application and we can generate reports whenever we'd like.
Okay, and then in your, in, in the staff report, it says that you will be conducting a study twice a year. With this study basically relates to the T2 report in order for us, because our target is 85%. Now this report will basically help us if we're meeting the 85% goal. Now, provided that you are given the discretionary authority in that twice-a-year study, is that where you will base if the increase will go up and down to the maximum of $3, $3 per hour? If we reach the 85%, would there be a chance that the, the starting rate of 150 will stay? Because what is, what is basically the, the assurance of, of the business owner that they will be paying 150 for the next six months because you're doing that study twice a year? So will they be given any kind of a notice, we're conducting a, a study every six months, now provided we get that 85% so the 150 will stay? Is that where you base your discretionary discretion for the increase or the steady rate?
Yes and no. So the, the twice a year, I think articulates my obligation to come back to you as an elected body and report what has gone on over those six months. What has the data told us? Have I made any adjustments in the rates? That, that's the reporting mechanism to you. I think the data analysis and the potential adjustment of rates should be notably more frequent than that because we'll have the data and, and we don't know anything right now, quite frankly. We're, we're doing the best we can to project, but we don't know until we're actually doing this. That being said, I will express to you in full honesty that my intention, as I stand before you this evening, would be that the rates should remain at this level, absent some extremely exigent shocking circumstance that occurs, for at least three to six months. Because anything less than that, we're not actually seeing the change in parking behavior to gauge the validity of the rates as they're set. There may be an inclination to knee jerk based on short-term parking behavior changes and drop rates or ascend rates through the roof, and, and I personally think that should be avoided. Initially, we need to give enough of a sample period to get good data that we can work with. I'll be working with the traffic engineers at the city to make sure I'm interpreting that data correctly. But the twice a year is the commitment to come back to you and ensure that I'm reporting to you any changes I've made and ensuring that those changes were made based on the 85% occupancy, not some arbitrary decision that, that I made as the chief.
Thank you.
Councilmember Medina?
Yes, thank you, Chief. A lot of work clearly has been put into this. So I do have a number of questions and, and I shared one with Councilman Salazar. So the 10-hour option could be added for somebody that wants to park all day or for the, for the enforcement period, because just want to make sure that's possible. It seems kind of weird to pay for the eight hours and pay for another two, but it sounds like you can make, make the program allow a 10-hour fee?
Absolutely. As far as like, can it physically be done? Yes. And if that's the direction of council, it's a relatively easy change to make in the back office.
Got it, got it, got it. The, the other question I have is regarding the parameters for, for the free parking Just curious how that, what would qualify somebody to get a free parking pass and then how will that information be verified?
So our, our initial thought as to how to do that is going to be to identify the decision maker, which will probably be via licensing, the city, who, who is the business license issued to and who's responsible for the business. And then confirming the employee status is as simple as scanning in a pay stub or some other evidence that the person is in fact an employee of that business. The goal here, you were asking about the fees earlier, this $50,000 for, for maintenance is always going to be to minimize staff work. So until I get into the T2 system and see exactly what that means, I don't know. But, but the goal is going to be to essentially have the applicant do 90% of the work. And then we'll just have a verifying body at the police department that, which we do with a lot of certifications, that will over, look over the paperwork, make sure everything's in order and hit the button to approve or decline.
Understood. So to avoid the, well, that person got a free pass and I didn't, like, because that's probably going to come up. And just kind of like the response to that's going to be, well, it's based on X, Y, or Z. And here it is. So for the purpose of transparency, just interested in, on your thoughts on how that will be carried out?
So I think that, again, we're putting the onus there on the business owner, as far as which ones are free and which ones are the $30 per month permits, right? They will have a threshold of what they can apply for in the system and the business owner will tell us, these are the two that license plates that we want for free and these are the ones we want to pay for. Whether the business owner's paying for it or passing it on to the employee, all of that, I think our practice is to leave that up to the businesses.
Okay. So my next question is a little complicated, so I just wanted to ask for a little bit of time here. So, Mr. Mayor, as well. So the LAS parking contract is for citywide parking enforcement, but based on the staff report, 100% of the cost is being charged to the parking fund. So my question is, that doesn't seem appropriate, and I think what should happen is that you should take the amount of charges that LAS will be providing to us and keep that separate for the citywide enforcement. And then the citywide enforcement, whatever revenues are generated from that, with that being citations, that, that pay for the, the amount of service provided. So there are two actual portions of LAS's enforcement. One is for the downtown parking and one's for citywide parking enforcement. So I just want to make sure that everyone's paying their fair share, that those people that are parking, whether it would be for street sweeping, for instance, that the ticket, the time that's being charged for that enforcement, that the revenue generated from that enforcement does pay for that piece so that everyone's kind of, we're making sure that each enforcement cost is being paid by the appropriate charge. So right now, it sounds like everything's being charged out of, being charged to the parking when it's not really seems to be, that doesn't seem fair to me. I, I'm having an issue with it. So I just kind of wanted to bounce that off of you first.
Yeah, I think I follow what, what you're suggesting, that the immediate challenge that would come to mind to me is I'm not sure how to bifurcate the costs associated with LAS's enforcement in the downtown corridor versus around the rest of the city. It would be one thing to bifurcate the revenues, that might be a little bit more palatable because you can look at where a citation is issued. But we, we don't currently have a mechanism in place to track what amount of time, for example, a LAS enforcement officer spends in vicinity A versus vicinity B to split the cost, right? The contract is one contract for all of LAS services.
So understood. So basically, there is an estimated amount of time that a parking enforcement will be needed to follow the street sweeper around all day, and it's probably going to be something like 30, 30 hours every other week, because enforcement is every, or twice a month. So whatever that number is, it really should be kept separate. So currently, right now, as we're, we're speaking, I think, I agree with you, like, right now it's not possible, but we should do the numbers so that in the staff report, the intent was that we needed to have the rates at a certain point to pay for the 1.0, is it $6 million? I'm sorry. Yeah, 1.472. So, but that charge of that labor is actually not being generated for the downtown, it's outside of, of the downtown. So I just wanted to kind of leave that with you and then hopefully we can figure out through our spreadsheet or whatever amount of time, somebody's going to be able to charge for those services. I think there's an answer for that. Then the other interesting thing I thought when, and I thank you, thanks to our new CFO that, you know, we're, we're charging interest on loans now set to the treasury, which I don't think has ever happened on any other loan. It's generally, and maybe somebody could help answer that question, I don't think it's ever been done before with an actual interest, because if that was the case, our cable company would owe a lot more money than it's, it's on the books right now to the general fund.
Councilmember Medina, to answer your question, we do have some precedent for charging interest rates on loans of city funds, most notably in the employee home loan program. And that is pegged to the LAIF, the local agency investment fund interest rate suggested annually. That said, we do not have any formal inter-fund loans right now. This is the first one that I'm aware of. And as we work through the budgeting process and addressing the informal loans that I talked, that I talked about last, last council meeting, that definitely can be a, a policy consideration.
Sure. So, so thank you for that. I think it's, it's smart, that it should be done. A loan is a loan and we can set the rate for whatever it is that we want to. I thought the treasury rate currently right now is, is over five, so I thought, I'm thinking that's pretty aggressive for inter-loans from, from one city agency to the other. My other, my other, this is probably more of a comment than a question, so city manager, or I'm city manager. Mr. Mayor, I can, I can, I'll wait for that then. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, please, let's hear from the public.
I have one speaker, one speaker card for Rebecca Milano.
I'll check with anybody else too, if you didn't fill out speaker card, just to make sure if you're here, you wanted, and wanted to speak. Evening.
Hi, City Council and everybody here. I went around today, I am Rebecca Milano. Tomorrow's the grand opening of my business that I'm starting here in San Bruno. And I have met with city officials, I've met with the police chief, I've heard from a lot of people in the very short time that I've been here. And the people that I heard for and I'm speaking for today are the owners of the small businesses of San Mateo Avenue. And what I'm here to say, you may not like, and I'm directing it to the three members that have historically not really been in support of downtown, but doing this whole parking thing, I know it's a done deal, it's not a conversation to have anymore, but the people and the owners, the non-English speaking, the people of color, the small business owners on San Mateo Avenue, already feel like the government here in San Bruno is not for them. There's been issues with permitting, there's been issues to get the, you know, their own businesses started, and the overall feeling is that they, you don't care about them. I've mentioned as well that the feeling of the downtown San Mateo Avenue has been, for my short time being here, it feels like it's an ignored little area. I, I think it's interesting that this whole parking study came to be in 2019. In 2019, I'm aware that the city of San Bruno also did another study on the beautification of the downtown. And now we're implementing this parking, which I'm looking at today and it says it's going to cost 1.4 million, and we're going to make 1.4 million, and you're going to create a lot of trouble for the business owners, for the people that do come down to San Mateo Avenue to shop. It's a very marginalized demographic there, and I feel like starting off at the higher rate, I mean, the parking alone, there's still people in the neighborhood that don't even know that this is happening. It's shocking to me that they're not aware of what's happening in their own neighborhood, but that is also a different issue with the communication between the city of San Bruno and the way that it communicates to its residents and business owners. But I will say that if you start at this higher rate, you're going to make people feel really upset. I heard people tell me today, they don't want us here, they're trying to gentrify this neighborhood, we are not wanted here. Why does it matter? I tried to get people to come to the meeting tonight and there's a lot of people that feel very ignored. And coming in with this parking plan that started out in 2019 and we're just getting started, thank you to the new city manager and the new blood that we have here, I feel like now there's some change going on. But we're also talking about the beautification plan and some discussion, I can't even follow because there's so many details to this parking mess, it seems like. But it just doesn't sound like it's going to be a revenue generating thing. It sounds like it's going to be a very negative impact on the locals of that little neighborhood that already feel marginalized, they feel forgotten. So I'm sorry that if I'm upsetting anybody, but this is the truth of what's happening in your local downtown area, and I hope that you all listen and consider it because those people need to have a voice. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Mayor Medina? Sorry to interrupt. There's two parts to this item, there's the introduction of the ordinance and then there's the public hearing. And so the, these comments here can be part of the public hearing, and if that's the case, then I just recommend that you open the public hearing.
I did, I did say I opened the public hearing.
Thank you.
I know, it probably wasn't heard, but, but thank you, always appreciate that. But I do want to give the opportunity to anybody else that is here who would like to speak, please step forward. And if you didn't fill out speaker card, that's okay. And then before Mr. Marshall comes up, do we need to change out the, the mic? Because it kind of, it's been, no, no, it's not you, it's the mic. It's been cutting out and I know somebody came and changed batteries. Do we need to change the mic, is my question? I just want to, because in the last speaker, I heard a little cutout and with the chief too, just to be safe. And if there are any other speakers, please feel free to come up after. Please.
I'm Mr. Bob Marshall, Business Owner, resident San Bruno.
That's worse.
I actually agree in part with the last speaker with the staff and the council of downtown. I know many of the staff and know many of you very, very well. And I've asked many questions myself that have not been answered and I'm pretty active. And so there, there are many people have no idea this is going on. This started out to be a parking improvement program, and now it's become a revenue, a revenue item. A simple answer would be to enforce the rules that are there now. The chief and staff members have said that the rules have not been enforced for the last five years or so. It's two-hour parking in the front and in the back, it's five-hour parking to eight-hour parking, and those have not been enforced. Let's just enforce what we have there now. It's, it's a simple problem. We want to make the parking better, we don't want to make it more difficult. The employee parking, I know it's going to go through it, so let's just pass on that, I'm wasting my breath there. But the employee parking, the two free passes, if it's going to be license plate reader, it's going to be useless. I spoke about it last, last month. Many of the employees are owners, if you're going to give two, and I have to put my license plate on it. If I put my wife's license plate on it and then she drives my car to work one day, her car to work the other day, my partner has the same problem she has, she drives her car and her, and her husband's car. The city parking lot for the employees have a little thing in the window, on the, on the mirror for employees. Why can't we do the same thing? So if, if I go to work, if my wife takes my car to work, she hangs it in her mirror. If she takes her car, she hangs it in that mirror. If I want to give my other employees that, that day, because I'm not working that day, they take it. If you get two, if you're going to give two, let's just give two. I've heard it can't be done, it's too difficult. Well, if you have handicap parking, it's going to be worked that way. If, if a handicap person has a blue placard in, in their, in their mirror, they're going to not get a ticket. Very simple, very simple. I asked at least three of you in writing why that can't happen, I asked the staff why this can't happen, and that was a month ago. And we can't get these answers. And it's just very frustrating. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody here would also like to speak on this topic? Please.
Well, I have a question.
Sure.
Well, I have a question. In the Daily Journal, they mentioned that $55,000 a month comes in, in revenue in parking enforcement, and I'm assuming that has to do with the street cleaning that Marty Medina is talking about. They also said that that $55,000 was allocated to the San Bruno Police Department every month. That was written in the Daily Journal. So my question is, I'm understa, I'm trying to follow what Marty was saying about splitting the two revenues to see what's happening. So the question would be, is $55,000 still going to allocate it to the police department in revenue for the street cleaning parking and then the separate for the downtown? That is a question of mine that I'm, it's a concern. And I think that's it. So that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience? Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak this evening? Okay. Because once we close public hearing, then that will preclude somebody from coming up and speaking. So, I just want to give one last opportunity. Okay? With that...
Move to close the public hearing. Second.
Motion, Hamilton, seconded. Salazar to close public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I know, you've talked about the Daily Journal before, and I've said, too, again, I could talk for, I could, I could talk for 20 minutes and they give a line, and it's their line as they edit it. So, but I understand what you're saying, because I think...
Well, I would say that that would be edited.
Okay. Let me just, so, what it is, though, too, where I think some of the confusion, because if you just look at it like that, it's like, okay, well, there's money that was out of the department, because they funded the enforcement element of it, but we have a CFO, and we have a police chief that could probably give better clarity than I. That's why sometimes I, I wait until we get staff and the information. Yes, please, chief? Because I think we might be able to clear up, because, because I know it's trying to understand what the Journal's saying, what, what we're saying up here, and how does that mesh?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Ryan Johnson, Chief of Police. The best answer I could give is that the $55,000 number, as I'm recalling it, had to do with enforcement that is being done by the police department and not by LAS. The police department will not cease all parking enforcement responsibilities. There's a great deal of parking enforcement that LAS cannot do. I could go into some detail, but at a high level, anything that involves use of database systems like CLETS that requires law enforcement clearance will still have to be enforced by police department employees. And so, the, the statement that was made in a prior presentation had to do with the intention to keep revenues generated by the police department and enforcement within the police department's budget. In reality, it's, it's kind of semantical, because at the police department, you have revenues and you have expenditures, and we just declare that we will generate X number of dollars in revenues. Some of that includes that we're issuing citations and generating those revenues. So, the $55,000 was to establish that if we make the decision to put enforcement revenues somewhere else, as we were doing with the Parking Enterprise Fund, that taking all the enforcement revenues, some of which are generated by police department staff and not by LAS, would not be appropriate, because it's part of our annual budgeting process to include those revenues to balance the budget.
Thank you. And while you're also there, while you're also there, just to go on to the hanging permit, because you did make, you made the comment that, of course, a person has to go out, kind of ensure that there's not a placard for handicap, because then that would null and void before the buttons hit. Currently, it's being described as the permit from the eight, currently the eight to five in the City Hall parking lot, that signifies it's an employee that was issued. Is it my understanding that that is going to revert to license plate readers at some point, and there will no longer be that mechanism? I just wanted to get clarity.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. Under this program, we'll no longer use the mirror hanging permits. The employees will have their license plates entered into the system.
Okay. And then, just because it was on a prior question, but it was, had we ever looked, the council or, and our staff ever looked into the organization just going back to what we had, i.e., the ticketing and the enforcement of the time element, but my understanding is to bring in the meters in, then that was the mechanism. It was, the first thing was to try to turn over the parking, but also you're bringing in outside agency, because we didn't have the personnel and the others to be able to enforce appropriately and properly. Not that they can't do the job, it's just this, the staffing component. And so, that also was supposed to have that other element to support that, and you could probably say it better than I, but I wanted to make sure we, that was a question that's been asked.
So, I think probably going back to where this all originated might be appropriate there, just to say that the 2019 parking study recommended both mitigating measures. We established a paid parking program downtown and increasing and enhancing enforcement throughout the city and downtown. So, the strategic initiative that came to the police department in 2020, when I started having these conversations with you all, was specifically to establish a paid parking program downtown and to enhance parking enforcement. So, that's the way that the initiative has been examined from the start.
Thank you. I just wanted, while you're here, and I'm sorry, Vice Mayor.
So, I had a, just a follow-up question on the, the first point you spoke on since you came back to the, to the podium, which is the, the, some enforcement is going to be LAS, and some enforcement's going to continue to be PD. When there are, and this is talking about city, citywide enforcement, when there are abandoned vehicles or vehicles that have been left for 72 hours or more, that type of enforcement, is that going to be LAS, or will that remain with PD?
So, in most cases, that will remain with PD, because it requires checking records and databases that LAS will not lawfully have access to. That being said, we'll be exploring and fine-tuning this relationship with LAS from the start, so there might be some combined enforcement mechanism that would allow for police department staff to do the records check, and then compel LAS, provided the resources are there to conduct actual enforcement. I don't know where it will end up. A better, maybe, example, Vice Mayor, would be registration violations. A lot of the tickets that get issued are for people parking on the street and not having their vehicles currently registered. This is not something that LAS can determine. They're not, they can't run a license plate and see that a vehicle is expired. So, all that enforcement will remain with police officers and community service officers.
Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. From our last council meeting, I believe the council have suggested to perhaps consider Sunday to be a, off of the meter, but in the staff report, it was presented as Monday to Sunday. The second thing that I need to clarify, based on the question earlier, that the chief had mentioned that we would start at a rate of $1.50, not the $3. And the last question was, in the staff report, I believe, it was, the weekend wasn't included on the estimate analysis. I just wanted to clarify that. So, if we add that 52 days in our revenue, then that would increase our revenue, or would that stay the same without, without the 52 days or the weekends, and not include the Sunday, based on the analysis?
So, probably we'll have to tag-team some of those answers. The, the answer to the seven days, yes, there was the question of should we enforce on Sundays. The reason why we're bringing back to you seven-day enforcement is actually the same reason that I stated that evening as to why we were recommending seven days, which is that the aim of the program is to target the impacted parking, and the data indicates that parking on Sundays is not any less of a problem than it is on the other six days of the week. And so, just purely from a rational thought standpoint, we couldn't find a good reason to come to you with a recommendation to say you shouldn't enforce on Sundays beyond the argument that we do often hear, that that's the way it's always been done. But we're trying to bring you a policy that is actually in keeping with fixing the problem, and as the parking on Sundays is every bit as bad as it is on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, it doesn't seem appropriate to remove the regulations and the enforcement on that date. As to the projections, I'll turn it over to our Chief Financial Officer.
Thank you. The model that is included, or the revenue projections that are included in the staff report, reflect the policies that the chief has, or that staff is making to city councils. So, that is the 12-hour enforcement in the on-street, 10-hour enforcement off-street, seven days a week. So, the model includes that. Councilmember, there was, there is reference in the staff report to the 2019 study, which did not include weekend revenue analysis, and so I believe that's perhaps what you may be referencing.
Thank you.
Other comments from council? Councilmember Medina, please.
Yes, thank you. So, the basis for the parking, for everyone, the basis for the parking meters is detailed in the 2019 Downtown Parking Management Plan. The plan provided a number of recommendations and strategies. One of the strategies is residential parking permit program. My concern, that if we proceed with, with a metered parking, that it won't take too many cars that are going to park in the residential areas to really screw up the balance that is currently there right now. So, I suppose I didn't stress enough in my previous comments at the last meeting, that we need to have that residential parking permit piece as we go forward, because what's going to happen, and I think most of us will agree here, is we're going to have shoppers or workers or owners that are going to say, you know what, I don't want to pay anything, I'm just going to park right here on Mastic, I'm going to park here on Easton, all the streets that are around our downtown. So, I don't want to see us to get to that point where a lot of people are going, are going to be even more upset, because honestly, people really don't know what's going on in our city. It's not that we haven't tried, I, there could be numerous reasons, but it really happens, people get most upset when the excavators in their front yard digging up the street, the jackhammers across the street pounding the concrete. Everyone's too busy. So, I know we're, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of us doing the, the parking meters. I think it's necessary. I also think it's necessary that we follow the strategy that's recommended in this parking study, that we do have residential parking permits. And we all know, all, most of us here on the council voted for it when it first came through, and not one neighborhood has taken resident, residential parking permits, because it's too complicated, and really, no one wants to accept the fact that I'm going to wind up not having a place for my car on the street with the residential parking permit program. Our streets were not designed for the number of cars that are in our community. So, proceeding with the parking permit program, we're going to force these shoppers to go into the residential neighborhoods, and what's going to happen is they're going to bleed into one street, and it's going to bleed into the next street, and San Bruno hasn't, I believe our council was trying to allow our residents to decide. Well, now we're not allowing our residents to decide, and we're imposing this on our downtown, so we're going to wind up doing what we probably should have done, but it was, it was probably too big of a piece to push. So, I'm interested in staff's reaction to following through with the parking permit, I mean, with the parking meters, and not addressing the residential parking permit program. I think, I think we're going to create a huge problem, because I can tell you, I live close to downtown, and it would take, and I've seen it, we've had somebody move out from across the street, and there's an additional one car on our street, and now we're all scrambling on, where am I going to park? And normally, that was my spot, and, and people come out, and they're like, looking at each other, like, who are these new people? And it just creates additional stress. Well, that's going to be continuous along our downtown. I drove down, and I drive through downtown probably more than anybody, and along the streets today, there's maybe three parking spaces available all day on Mastic. So, it's going to happen, and we're not really going to be prepared for it, and our residents aren't aware of it. So, we need to really double down on our, our efforts to advise them, and we need to provide the solution, and we need to make that hard decision, and pretty much say, every unit, every residence gets two parking permits. For the, those that are going to be impacted downtown, I would suggest they be free, because it's not somebody's fault that they happen to be living downtown, and now they're going to be impacted even more. At some point, I don't think ever, it's ever going to be, which is the dream of housing development, that everyone is going to ride a bike. That's just not going to happen. We're going, Americans love their cars, you're going to continue having your cars, so I'll close with saying, we need to, we need to put in a residential parking permit program for the streets that are impacted along our downtown.
Anyone else? Councilmember Salazar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, a lot of interesting comments tonight. I'm just going to, I just made some quick notes on here, so, this process has been going on for a long time, and those of us that have been around, Vice Mayor Hamilton started off on the TSPC when this item first came out, part of the subcommittee that started talking about citywide parking issues, and it took us a long time to get here. And initially, we did have a ton of public participation in our meetings. We filled this room in some of those initial meetings, so, you know, I, I make that comment because I do take the criticism seriously about us not communicating enough, and I think we have made, over the years, significant efforts to not only involve the community in the discussion, but also in the decision-making process, and unfortunately, we can't force people to attend our meetings, or even read our social media, or anything else that we try to do, and it is unfortunate. I realize, I hear the comments, that we have an ongoing communication problem. I don't know what more we can do. We expend a lot of money doing mailings. Mailings are ridiculously expensive. We try to use social media as much as possible. We bring stuff up at the meetings. The chief had a number of meetings downtown to make sure that we weren't taking anyone by surprise, and so, you know, I just want to say, you know, I take the criticism, I accept it, I take it seriously, but we have made efforts, and we continue to make efforts to make sure that we're not taking anyone by surprise when we make these drastic changes. You know, I've been against the idea of doing meters. I, I shared some of the thoughts about, you know, how it might negatively impact the businesses, and honestly, you know, after all the discussions and all the comments I've heard, I can't think of a better solution, or an alternative solution, that will get us what we need. And we do need to turn over parking. There is a parking issue, people are parking there, they know it's free, and the only way that we can do it is through enforcement. So, we've heard comments that, you know, maybe we should just enforce the, the rules that we have, and that, that also is a fair criticism, but looking at the budgets that we're looking at tonight, if we were to bring in only the enforcement, that's a half a million-dollar expense per year that we don't have the money to pay for. And the meters were the funding solution. So, you know, again, going back to the criticism about how long it takes us to do things, yes, it takes us years to implement solutions, and part of the reason it takes us so long is because we do have to figure out how we're going to pay for things. And so, this package of, of things that we're looking at tonight represents a holistic look at a problem, how we address it, and how we fund it. And so, you know, it took a long time to get here, but I think it is fairly well thought out, and I'm still not convinced that it won't have some negative impacts. I definitely think it will. I, I think there are patrons of downtown businesses that, you know, for them, this could be a significant additional charge to their, you know, daily, daily life, their expenses. I work at the transit district, and, you know, we look at rates on the buses continuously, and we know that even a small increase in fares has a very significant impact on the people that depend on that transportation for their livelihood. So, there is some potential for that here. That's one reason why I support giving the chief the latitude to go, you know, if necessary, down to zero. If we're chasing everyone away, we absolutely want to rethink that move, and we want to have that ability to, if necessary, provide fair holidays as needed to continue to stimulate the businesses, or the, the demand for, or the ability for the people to patronize the Regarding the, the comments around separating revenue streams, I mean, that's an interesting concept, but the, the way, a couple of things I heard even tonight is, one, that initially our program will be hyper-focused on downtown, and so, there will be no other revenue other than the, the meters, which is where we're projecting our operating funds, and then revenue from infractions. So, if LAS isn't ticketing anyone but downtown, there won't be revenue anywhere else, and so, we would automatically start with a lopsided program if we are doing anything else. And... if we are doing anything else. And in terms of, you know, how much requirement it would be to do the street sweeping enforcement, right now, we don't do citywide enforcement of street sweeping, so it's limited. And I believe that the department, it's not their practice right now to follow street sweepers and ticket, they'll do a quick sweep, and then they're done. So, I don't think they spend 30 hours chasing street sweepers. And I, I imagine LAS would do the same thing, they would do a quick run, you know, there's only like, one or two cars that are out there to tag on most days, most people do know to move, we're catching the people who overslept. So, I don't anticipate that that is going to be significant enough to offset the program if we don't consider, I mean, the, the meters were our funding solution. And so, the meter, the meters have to fund the entire program. That's, that's how it's programmed right now. And I think the, the infraction revenue is gravy, and I believe the chief told us at one point that we actually expect, expect that revenue to decrease as the program goes out. And that is actually an indicator that the program is working, because now we're having turnover and people are understanding that they're not made to stay there. So, I, I don't see how that could, how that could work, and given, given our scenario. So, I just, I wanted to put that out there. And also regarding the, the parking permits, I, I think we purposely decided that that was something we wanted to have in place prior to doing anything additional, and so that program was put in place. People do have the ability, you're right, we don't have any takers. But I think I would be very hard pressed to mandate that in a neighborhood where people may actually be negatively impacted by the program further than, than what they're going to be impacted by having meters downtown. And I, I think it's, it's telling that none of the neighborhoods felt they were so impacted that they wanted to take advantage of it. They may after this, because I do think we are going to push some, some of the problem into the, the residential areas. But I, I would still want the residents to request it, I would not want to impose. So, those are my comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I do support the parking meter. Most of our neighboring cities are doing it. What I don't want to see is it will impose too much hardship to our business owners. That's why I appreciate the chief reporting to us twice a year, so they can monitor the impact of the rate and, and the 15%. Hopefully, we don't lose 15% of our visitors and, and, and people visiting the downtown area. I, I think it's reasonable if we start at $1.50, as what chief stated earlier, and monitor it from there. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
So, I want to go back to comments that, that the chief made to us in previous, previous presentations on, on this topic. And we, we appreciate you not going back over everything, but this is, when, when providing the background tonight, but I, this is one that I think is important. And that is that we are not, what we are proposing for downtown isn't new. We are not blazing new ground, being the pioneer of putting parking meters in their downtown. In fact, we're the second-to-last community in our area to do this. And Milbrae, and Milbrae's the last, and they're looking at it. So, we're not trying to reinvent the wheel here. The, the, the specific point that I wanted to, to bring up that was, that was communicated to us both in these meetings and in the, in the, the, at least one of the meetings that, that the chief had with the business owners, is that there is no evidence of any town putting parking meters into their downtown and driving business away. The, the, the history, the data, the, it doesn't support that notion. The, what tends to happen is, you know, no one likes to pay for something that used to be free, of course not, no one, no one does. But the reality is, unless the, unless the, what's being charged is outrageous, you just get used to it, and then, and it happens. I received a, a bunch of comments from, from, from residents, and, you know, when we, when, especially when it was in the paper. And I, I got my pretty picture on that, on, on the parking one, so I got a lot of, I got a lot of funny emails from it. And the, one, one comment from a resident was that, oh, I'm never going to downtown again. Like, okay. And I reached out when we, when we had a conversation. And I said, didn't, didn't we talk like, six months ago, where you said that our downtown is decrepit and you go to Burlingame instead? And he said, yes. And I still think that's true. And I said, okay. And when you go to Burlingame, do you pay to park? And the answer was, of course, yes. Because Burlingame charges for parking, as does South City, as does San Mateo. And I can go on. The, Councilmember Salazar made this point excellently just a few minutes ago, something that I said in our, in our meeting last month on this. The, the, the point about, we should just enforce, just enforce the rules that we have, and that'll fix the problem. As soon as you say you want to enforce, that leads you on a path that ends up right here, where we are. Because there's, you cannot enforce the way that we used to. The only way to enforce is with, is with license plate readers and patrolling vehicles, like we're like is being proposed. And that is incredibly expensive. So, we need to have a funding source for it. And that's, and the meters are the funding source for that. So, last comment on, regarding the residential parking permit program, as was, as was mentioned, I have lots and lots of experience with this, with this program. I, I had a, a, a pretty basic disagreement with, with staff when that came through, because the, one of the, one of the overall mandates of the program was, we're not going to give away more, we're not going to provide more permits than there are spaces on the street. And in, in my opinion, and I'll keep my comments on this limited, because I know we're not talking about residential parking permits tonight, but the, in my opinion, that is why no one is signing up for the program. Because by definition, we have, even if you got rid of every car in a neighborhood that doesn't belong there, you know, people parking and going to the airport, or people bringing trucks home from their business and storing them on the street, or all these other, all these other uses, even if you got rid of all of those, we still have more cars in our neighborhoods than there are spaces on the street. And so, by definition, as soon as, as soon as folks, we, we put, we put the program together, we put it out there, people are approaching, would, would go look at it and see what is necessary, they're seeing, well, I'm only going to get two, and there's no option for me to ever get anymore. No, I don't want it. Because what am I going to do? You know, I've got, I've got three adults living in my home, you know, with the, you know, you know, typical, typical family with, with grown kids still at home. There's, there's three cars, there's four cars. What happens to the other two? So, that's, in my opinion, why the, no one has used the program. With that said, if we see cars getting pushed into the neighborhoods as a result of what we're doing here downtown, maybe that's going to, maybe that will change the equation, and maybe folks would want to sign up for it. I would, I would be in favor of reopening that conversation about the permit program and making changes to it, if, if folks are up for that, but that's not a topic for tonight. The topic for tonight is, is the parking meters. I've been in favor of the parking meters the whole time I've been here, because it makes sense. The, the goal is not to inconvenience our businesses, it's not to, it's not to raise a ton of revenue for all kinds of nefarious purposes. As we saw here, we're going to try to price it where we're going to probably get as close to break even as possible, just, at least to start. And the, the, the goal here is to provide the turnover on the avenue that the businesses need to thrive. And that's why I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
Okay, I'm not going to repeat a lot, but will there be negative impacts? Change does bring those, it's just a fact. I don't want to go deep into the residential permit program, and I have reservations about that. And, and again, that would be imposing, and that's what we were trying not to do. And I think with the new developments in other spots in our community neighborhoods, there would be saying, why aren't you doing that for us too? So, but with that, that's not what we're here to discuss. The holidays, I'm fine with, the prices that the chief has indicated to begin with, I do not, the, one of the questions was, doesn't that give the chief a lot of latitude to just say, okay, it was a dollar this time, and now it's three, based on what the passage is? I think with the outreach that he, the chief plans to do, the designee, I think with the reports coming back to the council, and, and let's be candid, if all of a sudden it jumps up $2 an hour at an offsite, I, I'm sure there's going, we're going to hear it. And we're, there will be a question be asked, it's not going to wait for a report. I have not found in my time dealing with the chief as a lieutenant, a chief, et cetera, that I think arbitrarily a decision like that would be made because it was a bad week. I, I want to say that unless I'm incorrect, Milbrae does not have meters, but San Carlos does not either. And so, because I, I walk Laurel at times. So, they, they also don't do it. Is it easy to find a parking spot? It is not. So, I know we began the conversation long ago, COVID put things on the sideline, and so we're back, staff is looking for action, so it can be implemented as, has been designed as well as discussed. I think that, so, yes, I'm okay with the chief or designee being responsible for that. I think we've answered some of the questions that were out there, that people brought forward tonight. So, unless there's any final comments, we're looking to see if there's any action on the item. Vice Mayor.
So, just a quick question to the city attorney, should this be two separate motions?
We can go ahead, and it can be the as-read by city clerk. You could do one.
Okay, okay.
That's correct. You can, you can move the motion as, the motion says read by the city clerk earlier.
Thank you. I would, so I would like to make a motion to, to adopt the ordinance and adopt the resolution as read by the clerk.
Second.
Motion, Hamilton, second, as read by city clerk. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The passage unanimous. Again, thank you to staff, thank you to the residents. And, and yes, I, I know that it, once it starts, and the communication, there's nothing wrong with over-communicating. So, let's be honest, communication works in relationships, it works in families, it works in community. So, overdoing it is better than underdoing it. So, again, thank you for the time and being here, and continuing to hear your comments. With that, that will conclude public hearings, that will move us on to item eight, conduct of business.
Item 8A, receive progress update on fiscal year 2023 to '24 city council strategic initiatives for the first quarter, July to September 2023.
I apologize, but can we take a five-minute break? And I wasn't to pause you, Jennifer Dionis, but five-minute recess, and we will reconvene. And it wasn't to pause you, Jennifer Dianos, but five-minute recess, and we will reconvene.
Okay. Understood.
On this project thus far, but there will likely be funding implications forthcoming. Next, we have the Implement Online Permitting. I just have three more, three more left. I'll zip right through. Implement Online Permitting, there was a partial soft launch of the online permitting service system for minor permits. That was, that was activated during the first quarter of this fiscal year. An expected soft launch of minor plan review permits are expected for the second quarter. So we're currently in that quarter now. And then ideally, there will be a full launch for community development permitting by the end of the fiscal year. That's the fourth quarter. This is a collaborative project amongst multiple departments. So Community Department is taking the lead, but there are Public Works and Fire Department components of this project to fully utilize the system. Next, and second to last, we have the City Offices renovation. This project and partial budgeting was included in the annual CIP Capital Improvement Program budget for this fiscal year. Staff are working to retain an interior design consultant, and that will be, those services will be utilized to develop a standardized workspace design and a furniture palette that maximizes efficiencies within the existing city structure or building spaces that we have. There are several changes that have already been made in City Hall. One example is the City Clerk's Office moved to an internal office in City Hall, and that allowed the utility billing counter to be moved to the front and center of the City Hall lobby. And so there, that action has already been taken. The next steps will include engaging the design consultant to maximize additional efficiencies. And then lastly, the CBC Governance and Work Plan Review. CBC stands for Commissions, Boards, and Committees. A study session was held in August of this year. There were initial discussions and feedback that were provided at that time, and a subsequent study session will be scheduled. Next, we'll move on to the projects that are anticipated to start later this year. In this category, we have five projects, and again, there's a caveat of the unfunded initiatives that are listed. First is the Wayfinding signage. This project, an RFP, was issued to prepare designs for enhanced parking downtown wayfinding and gateway signage. That was conducted in July of this year, and a funding, a funding request is expected to be included in the mid-year budget amendment pending funds availability and prioritization. No animations on this slide. Posey Park improvements. The design work anticipated to begin on this project is expected in early calendar year of 2024. So that's the first, that's the third quarter of this fiscal year. The Posey Park is located at the intersection of Huntington and San Bruno Avenue, and this project is a project that the city received approximately $200,000 in Measure K grant funding through the San Mateo County. Those funds are set to expire December 31st of 2024, so next calendar year. And this project is really designed to review the feasibility of the, the fountain that is, the repair of the fountain that is currently onsite, public art, landscaping, seating, and bike storage. And again, that's expected to start later this year. And then last for this category that I'll highlight are explore potential ballot measures in November of 2024. This is a sequencing of work. This is closely connected to the survey that I mentioned in the active projects. So the initial step is the survey in this process, and based on the results that are presented to you next month, staff will take the information, further analyze, analyze the results, and then prepare information for your consideration. This potential currently as it stands is for stormwater funding, fire station 52 replacement, and fire mitigation. Next, we have the progress report update for the projects that are unlikely to start this fiscal year. These projects listed on the screen do not have an update to report to you at this time. That's for a variety of reasons. These reasons could include staff resources, financial resources, and the sequencing of work. So for example, the first three projects that are on the left side of the screen currently are waiting for staff to be identified to undertake and oversee these efforts. So it's staff resource related, and a few on the right-hand side are, are waiting for the sequencing of work. But it is worth noting that the, all of the projects on the screen right now remain unfunded. This quarter, there was an additional level of information that was provided in the written update that was included in the agenda packet, and that was the estimated progress report. This was developed really to provide you a visual and a tool to see the progress of each of the, of the initiatives within the council's strategic initiatives list. This estimated progress is categorized by not started or on hold, early initiation, in progress, and completed. And then it's important to highlight, it's an estimated progress, and so these timelines are subject to change as progress is made. So this is my last slide for this evening. Again, there is no action that's required. The next update will be provided by staff following the second quarter that closes on December 31st, 2023. And then following that, we'll really restart the process again. So for fiscal year 24, 25, 25 already, the retreat for the planning of review of the strategic initiatives will be scheduled likely for the beginning of the calendar year, and ideally, that would be the time that council would review the list again, consider modifications, add new initiatives, and, and really discuss what's on that horizon for staff. So with that, Mayor, that concludes my comments. I'll turn the item back to you.
Thank you very much for the presentation and the information. Are there any questions on the presentation at this time? Comments will save. Seeing, hearing none, then I know there are no members of the public, so we know we can bring it back to council for comments and/or other. Vice Mayor?
So I have a comment. So I'm, I'm, and what's funny is that I wrote out my little comment, and then we had a member of the public who spoke a public comment earlier and said almost the same exact thing, almost verbatim. I'm, I'm, so I'm concerned about the pace of the Centennial Plaza improvement project, because activating that space is key to us being able to hold events downtown without closing the street, which is very unpopular with our, with many of our business owners. We would be able to do things like farmers' markets and other events. Moving forward with this project is also going to send a strong message to our business owners and their patrons and the rest of our community that we're serious about improving our downtown. And then moving forward in a timely manner is especially important, given that we just heard that work toward downtown landscape improvements is unlikely to start this fiscal year. So I just want to make the general comment that I really want to see us hit the gas a little harder on, on this project. Hearing that it may come back to us in, potentially in Q4, which is approaching next summer, is, is distressing to me. And then on the ongoing projects was the Community Fiber Upgrade Project. And this, this comment, I'm reaching out to my colleagues for, for hopeful concurrence on a, on a request. Given the latest information that we have about CityNet's financial status, I would like to formally request a study session for the council to discuss the long-term plan for CityNet before we proceed any further with that project. So I'm seeking, seeking concurrence from the council to ask for that study session.
I'll support that. Okay, before, I'm turning your mic off. So I know it states here, retreat will be scheduled, and council can consider new or modifying initiatives, which is kind of a modification. However, it's been a discussion for some time, right? And the global thing, which came out, I think it's the last initiative that we held here, kind of more on that.
And again, I'm not, I'm not asking that we discussed that, discussed it or anything tonight. I just want to just, I want to.
But I'm just saying, if somebody starts adding and changing or modifying, because, you know, that can open up. But I just wanted to see for our city manager, who was at our last retreat, but what your thoughts are going forward.
We're not going to repeat that retreat again. We're going to do it differently. But that's not your question. Council, Vice Mayor. I, I think the Community Fiber Project, just to provide a little bit of context. So we have two more council meetings this year, believe it or not. We're, we're coming to the end here. So it's unlikely we'd be bringing something forward that soon, but as we're hitting into the new year, I think this topic is going to be near and dear, because you will get our budget, our first quarter budget update next council meeting, which will put even more of a, a spotlight on the figure about, for the, the debt that the, or the owed that the fund is carrying right now. So CityNet, moving forward, we will come back to you very soon with some ideas and strategies on what next.
Great. Thank you.
The Vice Mayor was looking for. Councilmember Medina?
Yes, thank you, and thank you, city manager, for that update. It's something that actually, I guess I was waiting to hear when you were ready to give us an update, but council, Vice Mayor has asked for it, and we're going to get it when, hopefully soon.
Well, he, he did state that the, I believe, the next council meeting, when the CFO is bringing forward about the budget, that's when the intention, intention already was to, to do that. Yes.
Fair, fair, fair. And since we're so late into the year, we're going to start this whole process again. I mean, the last time we discussed, discussed the initiatives, I was concerned about setting realistic amounts of work, right? And in this last iteration of initiatives, there were things that weren't from the council that got added to the list, right? So I'm hoping as we go forward, and I, and I have the confidence we will, we'll have additional time to set the priorities and really set the timeframes up of what, what we want to get done, hearing from staff, what it's going to take to get done, and looking at our budget of, well, we need to do X, Y, and Z in order to get that done. Currently, right now, we've been told for a couple of years, there's really very little that we can do on any of these. And it showed, there was one completed. However, a lot of stuff is still getting done. So my concern, as we're taking on more park maintenance, Centennial Plaza, Posey Park, and we're hearing about this longer-term Crestmore Fields, like, how are we going to be able to do this? But I think I'll be patient and, and continue to, to wait for this larger. I, I think it's going to be a couple of days that we, that we should spend at least on this part, because it just seems like everything just kind of gets stuck and not at fault, because we don't have, because we don't have the staff, and we keep on getting more stuff that keeps on getting added. I would love to see Centennial Plaza out. We, we've been at 95% for, for, it seems like a while. And before that, we, I understand, we added the lighting and added the drainage, and those are important things. But if we go out to bid and at least have that target so that we can start sooner instead of waiting till, you know, June, or June, July. So I do share that. I, I, I feel often that when you don't set a, a schedule of completion, it just gets pushed over. And we have to just be really realistic with that, and probably takes more of these things off of our list that, that staff can do. We also have one-time funds. We haven't had a discussion on what to do with those funds. And okay, we're going to wait until the beginning of the year to kind of hopefully have a complete look at that. So I'm a patient person. It just gets, I get a little fidgety. We did approve doing some landscaping along Genovin. That was approved because we, we knew at a certain time, we couldn't do all of downtown. But, but we did vote on that initiative to minimize the amount of work to get trees planted on Genovin, which would match the trees that are going to be planted at Centennial Plaza. So I just, I don't think we need to wait for the bigger, bigger project to, to get things done. It just takes too long. It takes too much time to, to get those funds. So doing, doing some of the easier things, easier lifts, I'm, I'm hoping that we can continue talking about it. So I'll continue to be patient, but thank you for giving this update.
Councilmember Salazar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So thank you, Jennifer, for the update. Glad to see that so many, you have so many balls in the air, and that we're actually making progress on so many different fronts, though. Great news there. One, one comment I wanted to make, and we, we had a speaker earlier that said that there were some council members that didn't support downtown, and that, that kind of stuck in my mind, because I feel like council has always supported downtown, and we've supported it different ways. Maybe we're not consistent in, in our, in how we vote on every project. But one thing that, that's kind of highlighted to me is that we had an opportunity with Centennial Plaza to do something simpler and quicker, but we opted to do something more complicated and more time-consuming, and now we have nothing. And so, and I apologize if this is coming across negative, but I just, I want to make sure that, you know, going forward, when we think about projects, that we don't let the perfect be the enemy of good. And that there are opportunities that will come up, and sometimes, you know, I wholeheartedly supported the $200,000 project, which would have gotten us up and running. We would have had a space that we could start programming quickly. But instead, the majority of the council went in a different direction with something more complicated, and now we're still waiting on the design to be completed. So, you know, sometimes we have to be realistic about, you know, what, what a quick win could really do for us and not focus so much. I was also thinking about our cycle track program, where I, I was the, the one vote for doing the quick and dirty and getting a lane open on Huntington. And the rest of the council wanted to do the more elaborate program. And, you know, here we are years later, and there's still no cycle lane on Huntington. And we're still waiting for funding to materialize to do the, the more complicated project. And it would have been nice during COVID, when everybody was riding bicycles, to actually have that going and have that become part of people's daily commute, but it didn't work out. But so, so the only reason I bring it up, not a criticism of anybody, I, I think we all, we're all doing what we believe is best for the community, but there are sometimes cases where doing something simpler is, is the better solution. So I just, I just wanted an opportunity to say that. Thank you.
Are you rebutting, or?
Yes.
Okay, then, no. I mean, let, let me have my opportunity first. That's all. Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Okay. Because this is just for feedback. There is no action, and so, and you know, my practice has been to go last, and I'm just going to wind it up really quick, and then I'll be done. So, and then, so why don't we make sure, let me go one last, that, are you good? Cindy, you're good. Marty, you good?
I'm patiently good.
You made that clear. Vice Mayor, please, and I appreciate your patience.
Sure. So I absolutely agree with that we should not make perfect the enemy of good. That is, that is something that I live by in many aspects of my life, and I absolutely agree with that. I just, one, just one point, and I appreciate all of your, 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 your thoughts and your position on it and all that. The $200,000 quick and dirty project, our former city manager brought that back to us and said it was not feasible. So we, he, they, he presented that to us. We said, great, let's do that. And then he came back to us and said that we looked, and it's not possible to do it like that. It's going to, and then that led us down the path that we're on. I just want to just kind of clarify that. That, because it was, there was, it was, it was never going to happen at 200 grand. Okay.
Okay, and appreciate, thank you, Tom. And I think for myself is, I just go back to the PowerPoint, which, right or wrong, was at 150. Yeah, and, and obviously, when you add things, that's what happens. And I still, with the Centennial specific, I would still say that there were opportunities like it on Laurel. What they have done, whether it's the planner, whether it's the bench, whether it's the, the stones, which has, as I've mentioned before, skin in the game, rather than just do it. Do, do we need all of that amenities that were brought, or can we do something that is more within line? The, the thing that I have in general is that I think we have to have things. So it is, comes from the council, but however, if we can do a clinician and get a grant, and we have an opportunity from the county, we take those. Staff brings that forward and says, hey, you know, and I was pushing that with Caligula, and, and we had an opportunity. So sometimes we need to pivot to get the greater good for San Bruno. But, you know, on the, which Councilmember Salazar mentioned, the Huntington Bike and Ped. You know, there was $2 million allocated from the San Mateo County Transportation Authority that I voted for. Not just because I'm here in San Bruno, because it was the right project that should be awarded. But at the same time, that's $2 million that expires in 2026. If we do not complete the project, that money will be taken back. The money has come in from the other project that was to, it's one-time money. That was a suggestion, but it was not confirmed by council to do that. So the money is sitting there. Why don't we move forward? We talk about Posey Park. I have a concern with that. Money is going to expire in 2024. Supervisor Pine, before he leaves office, should see the result of his Measure K funds. And he has asked me about that. What's happening? So I, I think, you know, we can have all these things that we need to do, but I think we need to prioritize some of it about the funding sources that we have. And I think it would be a shame if we lost the 250. I think it would be the 1,000. I think it would be a shame if we lost the 2 million. So I hear that Centennial is the priority, but we also have deadlines that we need to do. So do we do the newspaper racks, Centennial, Florida, Posey? I mean, Bike and Ped? I don't know that we can just throw all the staff and say, get it done. So I think we really need to look at it holistically, globally, and understand the realization of some things have to move in order to meet deadlines. Those monies, staff worked hard to put those grants and those opportunities together. Former Vice Mayor Linda Mason also helped in the 250,000. And in all honesty, when we talk about aesthetics and appearance, we can look at a fountain that doesn't work, whatever it should be. What is the first thing that a, somebody who coming off the train sees, or they're driving under the overpass? It looks like somebody didn't finish the front yard. So I think we need to really, you know, somebody very, that we know, I think, was something like, you can do anything, but we can't do everything. So I think we need to keep that in mind, and those are it for my comments.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes, of course.
Because I'm the one who said that?
I, I've heard that.
Let me, let me just offer a couple of quick comments, because I, I think the council has some, I have some information that maybe will help you feel somewhat better, or maybe worse, depending on your, your take on this. As far as Centennial, so Community Services Director Travis Carlin and I have been talking about a lot of the parks projects. And as you know, Travis is new here. He just joined us a month ago. And he really is coming up to speed on, on all of these, and he's aware of some of the high interest in making sure these projects go forward. Let me throw you a curveball, because it's always about curveballs from the city manager. One of the things we're recognizing is Centennial Park's going to be expensive, and the council's hypersensitized to no more money for Centennial Park. So one of the things we're flirting with is, do we bid it at the same time we bid Florida Park to get some economies of scale? What will that do? It will slow down Centennial Park. In my mind, I think there's, there's value in looking at that, making sure that the end product is indeed something that, having waited this long, that we actually get something that we really are hoping for. That would be number one. I'm going to apologize to Councilmember Medina. I'm completely unaware of Trees on Genovin. I will learn all about it tomorrow, though, I promise you. So this is news to me. The cycle, we just got the South Line money in. I think we just did the transfers yesterday or something, the wire transfer. So the cycle track money is now in, and we will marry it to the, the grant from, whomever the grant was from, the $2 million grant. So we should be able to move forward very, I'll use the word quickly, in air quotes. So we are, we are ready, we should be in position to move forward very aggressively. I have no doubt that we will get that project done before the 2026 deadline for the grant. As far as, there was one more item, I'm sorry, I'm pulling a blank. Posey, sorry, the Quarter Million Dollar Posey. Yeah, so that is on our, our radar as well right now. And actually, staff is looking back at, looking at the, the leak, leak, leak detection efforts around what happened, why did it happen? And I know this has been done before, and we'll do it again until we figure out why the fountain doesn't work, what can we do with it? It's likely going to cost us more than a quarter million dollars to fix it, though. So we just have to be at peace with that, that, you know, sometimes giving a grant back may make sense. But Mayor, I like your metaphor of it looks like our front yard wasn't finished, and you're absolutely right, and we have to stop doing that. So I would push to get our front yard finished in a way that, you know, is worthy of, of San Bruno. So a couple of updates just on comments you guys made, but these are the conversations I think we need to continue to have. I know one-on-one, I tend to brief you on these things in passing, so hopefully, we'll keep you guys apprised. There's a lot on that list to do, and the one thing I would push next year to do is this idea of moderation, restraint, not giving us more, but maybe taking, and I think Councilmember Medina, you may have said this, actually taking things off the table so that we can be productive and succeed. Because it makes us look good, it makes you look good, it makes our community feel better. So if I can just close with that statement, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your time.
Then thank you very much to my colleagues for the conversation, and thank you, Marty, for your patience and being patient. And I appreciate, and Jennifer, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we're going to go to council committee reports, please. Do we have any? Any? Are you sure? Okay, let's move on to comments from council members, please.
Go ahead, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Oh, I, I mean, the second harvest is tomorrow. So we, the community is always looking for volunteers. I will not be there, because I will be taking a tour with the, for, in my, in my role as, on the Board of Directors of Mauska. So I will, I will not be there, so that's one less, one less hand. So if you're out there listening and have free time tomorrow between 1:45 and 4 o'clock, please show up at Bel Air, and Councilmember Medina will put you to work. The, and then, of course, for, for those who are in need of food, the, you can sign up on the spot. You know, there's no, no pre-registration necessary. Please come and take advantage of this resource.
Councilmember Medina?
Is there a pancake breakfast this weekend, next weekends? Next weekend. Got it, got it, got it, got it. On a somber note, I, I wanted to acknowledge and the passing of Lion Allen Hafter. He was a great lion for 35 years. He was an extremely kind man, and the San Bruno Lions are going to miss him. So I just wanted to acknowledge that.
For myself, really quick, I'm continuing my visitation of all the schools, as I indicated when we had the city manager and I attended the high school, and I challenged my electeds. So I went to Stratford, Bel Air, and Allen to talk to the principal and visit the campus and, and see the, the opportunities. I also went to, at Bel Air, the, I'm going to call it the community facility, and spoke to that person, and her enthusiasm is infectious. And the programs and opportunities that are not just for the school district, but are open up for various things. And it's worth more to hear later in greater detail, but it was amazing. I want to tell you that staff and I are working hard in regards to the Recreation Aquatic Center. We've had a meeting before. We just had one this morning. We're scheduling a full meeting. I want to thank Director Matt Lee, who is on top of this and having daily conversations with primary person in PG&E. I've spoken to the Vice President of PG&E last Thursday, again, to have us in a collaborative working relationship so that we end. working relationship so that we end this project that will be meaningful to this community and turning the page. So I wanted to continue to let you know that. With that, we'll move on to, but before we adjourn, as we know, there was Suzanne Summers, who you saw on the news, had, has passed away. And of course, many now know of her origins here in San Bruno. This is somebody that wrote this to me, so I'll just read this. Suzanne Summers, she grew up on Crystal Springs Avenue and also lived on Cunningham here in San Bruno. She attended St. Robert's Church or School, where she sang in the choir with her mother, graduated from Cappuccino High School, good people, led the Posey Parade, and visited seniors at our senior center. Additionally, she spearheaded the Equal Pay for Women movement. She is beloved by millions around the world, especially here in our hometown. Yes, Alan Hamill and Suzanne Summers were grand marshals at one Posey Parade through the park. There was a commercial that was done, and we're going to see, keep in mind, it's from 1979, so we'll see how it comes through from then to now. City Clerk.
I did that better when I was a kid here in San Bruno, California, because my dad would give me cherry Lysabers for every cartwheel. So I did lots of them, because I'd do anything for Lysabers candy and dad. Juicy, good Lysabers. They're like, coming home again to San Bruno. I still love both.
Thank you, Lupita. And that wasn't to give Lysabers a plug, that was a commercial that was done here in the city of San Bruno. For those of you who have lived in this town a long time, I think you would remember and know that the park was Buckeye Park, that Suzanne Summers and her father recorded that back in 1979. So with that, we want to, here in the city of San Bruno, say that we are proud of Suzanne Summers and her start here in San Bruno and what she has done through her lifetime. So we were with her and her family as they mourn her loss. And I want to thank very much again, staff, the team, colleagues, all of you. Thank you for being here. Thank you for a good meeting, and thank you for the work you do. And to all of those that are in each of your departments, on behalf of myself, and I'm sure my colleagues, please pass on my thanks and appreciation for what they do each and every day for this community and its residents. With that, this meeting will be adjourned to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held November 14, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. Meeting adjourned.